Good evening. Studio, we are ready to start in two minutes. We'll have roll call just to ensure that we have everyone with us and that their microphones are working. It's really more of a mic check for the folks that are at home. Ms. Tolan?
I'm here. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
I'm here. Good evening.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm here. Good evening, everybody.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
I'm here. Good evening.
Ms. Pokarsky?
Good evening. I'm here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here, thanks.
And in person, we have Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Marin, Ms. Eisemeyer Heiser, Ms. Omeish, myself, and Dr. Anderson, the leadership team. Okay, this is the December 3 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board. It will now come to order. Please, I'm sorry, Mr. Anabudo, are you with us? Let's do a mic check.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please rise as our student representative, Nathan Anabudo, leads us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anabudo. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, bear with me, my documents, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed session on December 3, 2020, and to the best of each member's knowledge, and public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Frisch. All in favor of the motion? Ms. Omeish, Ms. Eisemeyer Heiser, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Pokarsky, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and myself. That is unanimous. This is our nonsense portion. Item 4.02, Mosby Woods Elementary School renaming has been postponed to a later date. Copies of tonight's agenda are available at the back of the auditorium. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcpss.edu/tv/c899. I now call on Mr. Anabudo for an announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Sorry, my computer is now acting up. Give me two seconds. I had it. Okay. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Human Rights Day, December 10, 2020. Human Rights Day is observed every year on December 10, the day the United Nations General Assembly adopted in 1948 the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. This year, Human Rights Day marks the 72nd anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a milestone document that proclaimed the inalienable rights which everyone is inherently entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. It is the most translated document in the world, available in more than 500 languages. Drafted by representatives of diverse legal and cultural backgrounds from all regions of the world, the Declaration sets out universal values and a common standard of achievement for all people and nations, all nations. It establishes the equal dignity and worth of every person. The Declaration and states commitments to its principles, the dignity of millions has been uplifted, and the foundation for a more just world has been laid. While its promise is yet to be fully realized, the very fact that it has stood the test of time is a testament to the enduring universality of its perennial values of equality, justice, and human dignity. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all. The principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948. We need to stand up for our own rights and those of others. We can take action in our own daily lives to uphold the rights that protect us all and thereby promote the kinship of all human beings. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Anabudo. I now call on Ms. Tolan for the resolution for National Inclusive Schools Week. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Whereas, since its inception in 2001, National Inclusive Schools Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. And whereas, Inclusive Schools Week is an annual event sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network and is held during the first week of December. And whereas, this year's theme, "The Time for Inclusion Is Now," was chosen in recognition of ways in which a greater appreciation for inclusion as a philosophy and a way of life in our schools and community has emerged. And whereas, many of us have seen positive changes in awareness of inclusion as a requirement for achieving greater success, or excuse me, greater access, equitable opportunities, and more authentic relationships, recognizing that we have many more steps to take to reach our goal of a fully inclusive school culture. And whereas, the week also provides an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve the ability to successfully educate all children. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board reminds the entire FCPS community that education takes on a beautiful shape when all children are included. I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Eisemeyer Heiser. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes, just briefly, please. Each year, the joyous examples of inclusive practices in schools around our district fill our spirits and increase our commitment to reaching a day when inclusion is fully embedded in all of our practices. I have seen great examples of inclusion across our classrooms, and I'm sure this occurs across all of our subject areas. I've seen all students given great opportunities to excel in our project-based learning activities, our clubs, and our community-building activities, and know that we can expand this work. In my work with teacher professional development, I've worked with all types of teachers and often found our special education teachers to be some of the most creative and giving people I've ever worked with, and I applaud the work that they do. At this point, I think it's a great opportunity to welcome, again, welcome, our new Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, Michelle Boyd. Under her leadership, we are hopeful FCPS will keep inclusion in our district schools to a whole new level. Welcome, Dr. Boyd, and we are so happy to be working with you. In addition, we will welcome Lisa Boyne, who is our Chief Equity Officer in January, and we look forward to working with her and her team as we strive to make FCPS as inclusive as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Eisemeyer Heiser, would you like to speak to your second?
Oh, boy, would I. I really am so excited for this, and I'm really, really honored and thankful to be able to second this because, as many of you know, inclusion in inclusive settings is probably my number-one passion and the main reason I am here today. And so, I almost cry. Like, I know, Dr. Anderson, you talk about crying in certain things, and I really cry when I think about celebrating Inclusive Schools Week because I firmly believe that we all are better when we include everybody. Inclusion shows, inclusive settings are shown, research shows, that it improves long-term outcomes for students with disabilities, and it improves our world. Inclusion in life starts with inclusion in schools. And if we're truly going to have an inclusive society where everybody is welcomed and everybody is valued for all the things they can do and not seen for all the things they can't do, that has to start in our schools, and it has to start not just for a week, but every minute of every day. We have to find a way to make sure that everybody is given a chance to find that spot where they can shine and where they can be included. And I'm just going to end it, I won't talk too long with me, but with a really short, personal story. My son has autism, and he spends a lot of his time in non-inclusive settings due to his academic needs. But he spends a lot of time in inclusive settings because of his strength of music. And early on, when he was in bands, because of his behavioral differences, there were students who were not happy that he was there. And as he was in the bands for a while, and the students saw the joy that he brought and the talent that he brought and the positive attitude that he brought, student after student have come up to me over the years and told me how much they have learned from being in an inclusive setting with my son, and how much they're going to take those lessons onto their life, and how much they have been transformed because they've understood not just people who are like them, but everybody that they live in this world with. So, I am thrilled to be able to second this, and I am excited that we're bringing this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members who wish to speak to this resolution? Ms. Marin?
Yes, I'm so glad that we're making a public statement about this today, although I hope that our work shows that we support this in other ways on many other days. And I just wanted to share that in my own role as a parent, working with my children who have differing abilities and disabilities, it's really showed me how I need to learn to look at what people's strengths are. And it's been actually quite refreshing to see how someone who is labeled with a disability, actually, or not labeled, but who seems to have a disability, actually has some really great strengths. So, I'm very glad that we're sharing this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Anderson, for recognizing me. I wanted to give a little bit of a different perspective because we hear so much about the importance of inclusion for our exceptional students with disabilities. I'd like to talk a little bit about the incredible role and importance inclusive classrooms have on all of our students, and how Fairfax County's leadership in this area actually leads to our students going on to college and into the professional world and benefiting so greatly from being in classrooms with neurodiverse students. I have a daughter who certainly spent a lot of time in inclusive classrooms because of her experience at Bellevue Elementary School, Carl Sandberg, and West Potomac. And when she got to university, she actually was selected to be an extra support system for students who were being included, for an inclusive classroom at her university. And she ended up having this great experience assisting with note-taking for this student, but more importantly, the bonds and the experience and the growth for her personally were so important. And I just want to encourage people that our inclusive classrooms are beneficial for all of the students in those classrooms. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members wishing to speak to this motion, to this resolution?
Well, very quickly, I will say that as a former school principal, this has been one of the highlights of my year, when we had the opportunity to celebrate National Inclusive Weeks, Inclusive Schools Week. It is an opportunity to do exactly what my colleagues have shared, which is for students to benefit and learn from each other. It is for all of our students to learn empathy and patience, and that differences are not deficits. And it's an opportunity for all of us to grow. So, I'm very happy to just say a few words on behalf of this resolution. At this time, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Ms. Omeish, Ms. Eisemeyer Heiser, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Pokarsky, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and myself. That is unanimous. Thank you.
I now call on Ms. Cohen for the recognition of Purple Star Schools.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. Virginia is home to over 7,300 military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in our nation. All our Fairfax County Public Schools proudly welcome and support the over 14,000 military-connected youth and their families who are part of our school community. In 2018, the Virginia Department of Education established the Purple Star designation to be awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Criteria established for the award were designed to increase educator awareness of military-connected youth and help schools structure their support to and for military-connected youth and their families. Schools that earn this prestigious designation received a resolution from the Virginia State Superintendent, Dr. James Lane, and a special Purple Star recognition to display at their school. Tonight, we are pleased to honor two new schools who happen to be located in the Springfield District. They are Keen Mill Elementary and West Springfield Elementary, and they've been awarded the 2020 Purple Star designation. These two schools join our 32 other FCPS schools who have received this prestigious recognition to date. The Purple Star award serves to set each of these schools apart for the hard work of the faculty, students, parents, and community partners who stand together to ensure that our military-connected students are supported academically, behaviorally, and emotionally during their transitions. We thank Principal Renee Miller from Keen Mill and Principal Kelly Shears from West Springfield Elementary School and their school staff, students, and community for their awesome support of military-connected students. And we thank our military families for all they give to our nation and our community. Principals Miller and Shears have joined us virtually this evening, along with Colonel Joshua P. Seagraves, Garrison Commander at Fort Belvoir. And he's watching the recognition in support of the military community in Fairfax County, and we thank him very much for his collaboration with FCPS.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, and congratulations to Keen Mill Elementary and West Springfield Elementary. Yay! You know, we're in person. We could actually clap. They will hear us. Too much in the virtual world here. The next order of business is citizens' participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Speakers should only address new business, action items, or resolutions as listed on the meeting agenda. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student, and are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. In-person speakers should stand behind the black line on the floor and speak into the microphone. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us today. Tonight, we have 10 citizens who've signed up to address the board, and we also have four video testimonies. I now turn to our clerk to welcome our speakers.
Our first speaker is Teddy Geis.
Good evening, school board members. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving, and I want to thank Megan McLaughlin and Carl Frisch for participating in Woodson's Thanksgiving Project for Healthcare Workers. I'm here to express my concern regarding the recently published ORSI report found in the Washington Post and reported by NBC, CBS, ABC, Fox, CNN, and the Daily Mail about failure rates being up 83% for students in grade 7 through 12 and up 300% for middle schoolers alone. That's unacceptable and embarrassing to ourselves as an elite and outstanding school system. Right now, we need to get our priorities straight. I'm aware that the other nine speakers here tonight are most likely going to speak about TJ, and that's what's really concerning. We are in the middle of the worst public health crisis in over a century, and rather, the school system is more worried about an admissions test to one school than improving mitigation strategies or helping failing kids and struggling teachers. There are friends of mine who struggle and fail virtual assignments because teachers are too overburdened to help them. I have had teachers who have broke down and cried in the middle of class because they missed their students and aren't getting the support they need. This is a major problem that FCPS needs to fix, rather than focus on this TJ issue because those proposals aren't good enough for anyone, not for Sojatha Hampton, not for the TJ Coalition. So, I ask you, please don't focus on 500 kids at a single school. Focus on the other 190,000 kids who need just as much attention during these tough times. I'm okay with not going back to school right now because it's better to be safe than sorry. However, we really need to focus on student wellness because we are emotionally exhausted, overworked, and feel failed by this school system. There is a work session on Monday about TJ admissions. I urge you, for the good of the county, hold a return-to-school meeting instead because there should be a more important priority for the school board right now, creating better mitigation strategies and getting students the support they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Belizeal.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Emily, and I'm the mother of two elementary FCPS students. I'm here to speak on their behalf and also on behalf of the thousands of parent members of the Open FCPS Group, a volunteer group of Fairfax parents from across the economic and political spectrum who are advocating for our kids to have a choice to attend school in person full-time. COVID-19 has certainly brought challenges, but one silver lining of this virus is that it largely spares children. And yet, FCPS has failed to make choices that reflect this incredible good fortune. We continue to languish in a distance-learning model that is failing children. It has been 40 weeks since our children have stepped foot inside a classroom. During this time, parents have been sharing our concerns about the daily struggles of our kids. And now, the official results are in and reflect exactly what we have been saying. The first quarter saw an alarming increase of failing grades. We have also seen how the ungodly amount of screen time, social isolation, and lack of physical fitness is damaging our kids. This all-virtual model is not sustainable. Second, we have waited and watched and listened to every meeting of the school board in hopeful anticipation of a clear and detailed plan with real return dates to rely upon. One would expect that in these 40 weeks, that the staff and board would commit every shred of energy and focus to opening of our buildings, but instead, we see you planning to rename schools and overhaul the admissions process for a high school that no one can even step foot into. And when in-person plans are addressed, we watch in utter confusion as you ignore advice from our county's Health Department, when they have stated twice now, even as early as July, that schools should and could open. And now, the same sentiment is echoed in every corner of academia, health, and education. In fact, the CDC Director announced last week that schools should open and remain so. We are not asking that you take away the option of virtual for those who choose it, but structuring an entire school year around a failing model is unacceptable. And perhaps the most egregious of all is that according to the long-awaited health metrics, they have revealed that our kids could have been in the classroom since the beginning of the school year to just before Thanksgiving. All the while, we watch helplessly as millions of kids in other districts all over the country with the same guidance from the same CDC have been attending school for months. Public education in America is an essential service. It's one of the treasured cornerstones of our society, and yet, in Fairfax County, we are allowing it to be chipped away. Please act in the best interest of children and their education, as you swore an oath to do so, by opening our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Himanshu Verma.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. The Columbus Group has defined giftedness as asynchronous development in which advanced cognitive abilities and heightened intensity combine to create inner experiences and awareness which are different from normal. This synchronicity increases higher with intellectual capacity. The uniqueness of a gifted renders them particularly vulnerable and requires modification in parenting, teaching, counseling, in order for the child to develop optimally, essentially stating that gifted and special-needs children are two sides of the same coin. Giftedness can be as much of a curse as a blessing. This is the reason why Virginia has a law that protects these children. By not being aware of this law, you have grossly neglected these children. What you may not realize is that TJ is a safe haven for many such twice-exceptional students who are highly gifted and have learning disabilities. Their voices are being suppressed. Their academic strengths and weaknesses put them on an average scale, and hence, they are extremely hard to identify. TJ is a place where twice-exceptional students can immerse themselves in classes and challenge them in areas of strength. Some of the required classes are in their weak areas and might be stressful, but social, emotional, and academic affirmation that they get from excelling in their areas of strength can more than make up for the struggles in their reading and writing assignments. Some of you have special-needs children, so you probably understand, you know, what special-needs services you get from the county, and you also understand the pain that a parent of such a special-needs child endures. So, you would also understand why thousands of parents are up in arms and are thinking to start recall campaigns to join hands with Open FCPS movement. I think such issues can be easily resolved if board adds parents of twice-exceptional students as stakeholders in this process and takes their input. University of California, Berkeley, TAR4 found that SAT and ACT scores accurately distinguished among black and among Hispanic students that did not and did not recommend elimination of SAT. The experts that you hired to make recommendations on the AAP did not recommend the elimination of all tests. Have you asked them why a test is still useful in identifying students to be screened for AAP? A good test will help identify twice-exceptional kids, while over-reliance on GPA and SA is why not. TJ is not supposed to be a school for students with exceptional verbal gifts. It is a failure to consider math tests means that admissions will be skewed away from twice-exceptional students who are weaker at language arts, regardless of how strong they are in math or science. You can have all the applicants take ACT math tests online this year, but if you cannot do that, you can still use results from other previously taken tests like IAT doing the holistic process.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Torrico.
Good evening, school board. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening, school board. Thanks so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Although I am a part of the TJ Alumni Action Group, I actually, I'm not here to speak about TJ today. I'm here to speak about AAP and the AAP process because, coincidentally, just three days ago was the deadline for this particular year of AAP application. It was actually a deadline that was made to be earlier, and it was a deadline that, like, it was announced in a, you know, sub-bullet point in emails to parents and teachers and students throughout the county. And I worry in particular that this particular year, we're going to have even less kids of underrepresented groups and their parents doing the application process for AAP. It has already been identified in It has already been identified in the Associated Press that the academic, advanced academic placement process in Fairfax County disadvantages Black and Latin and kids of low income and kids of English as a second language. Again, it is something that you can appeal if you have money, you have more resources. I've talked about in detail about how that is possible and provides more advantage to those that have both social knowledge and resource capital. I worry that again, we're going to have another year of not having that inclusion. And to this point, I want to make that, again, I'm here not to advocate even for myself. I'm here not, not just advocating for my children. I'm advocating for kids and students around the county. I commend Mr. Geis, the first speaker, because consistently he has been the first speaker in many of these meetings. And each time, he's advocating for others, not for himself. And I want to make that point and distinction. The TJ Alumni Action Group and myself are not advocating for ourselves. We're not advocating for our children. In fact, actually, my kid would have a better shot if nothing changed. But the status quo and people who oppose the efforts, they are advocating for themselves, for their children. They worry about their second child, their third child missing the opportunity because they already figured out the formula to get in there. And they figured out how to navigate the AAP process, how to appeal it, what additional lectures, what additional teachers, what additional resources, what additional advantages will get them on that path. And I want to indicate finally that, you know, it is ridiculous that in second and third grade, a child's life can be, begin to be set, their path can begin to be set, but based on a few tests that are preppable, that you can prepare for. You know, I taught, I was talking with my coworker and she was telling me about how her son, her son was eligible for AAP four. They chose not to go to the AAP four school because they wanted him to be closer to home with his friends from the neighborhood. But already, her son was feeling that she was not doing the best for him, that he was not getting the best education. And that's not something we need to foster through the AAP system. That's not something we need to foster through our academic system. We need to foster situations where there's not a differentiation.
I'm sorry, the speaker's time is now up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Ashke Devra Konda.
Hi, my name is Ashke and I'm a 2011 TJ graduate. School board, I hope each of you and your loved ones had a safe Thanksgiving. I understand that given everything going on now, the last thing you all want to hear about is TJ, nonstop speech after speech, month after month. I know the past few months have had a narrow focus on how to admit five hundred fifty students when there are other issues concerning the one hundred eighty-eight thousand students in FCPS. TJ has taken way too much of your time, and I know you all have been unfairly attacked, vilified, and criticized over this. Please remember that TJ represents larger education access issues for underrepresented minorities, girls, special ed and neurodiverse students, and students with free orders meals, which is why we keep coming back to it. I admit, this is the fifth time I'm speaking to you all since September. But I fully support the changes a school board is making to make citizen participation more fair. When it is only those who want the status quo regarding TJ admissions speaking, you hear many offensive viewpoints, some more explicit than others. At the October eighth school board meeting, one speaker said to your faces, quote, "My kids spent a summer for prep, and I know so many Black high schoolers who spent their summer getting strength training," end quote. It's a derogatory stereotype that assumes Black people will only choose sports. If we don't participate, then these coded dog whistles dominate. Furthermore, we aim to support marginalized groups in the system, not to monopolize the system. Two weeks ago, we gave speaking slots to the Fairfax Education Association and to the NAACP. This week, we made sure to give speaking slots for both a potential Academy of John Lewis High School and for SEPTA regarding restraint and seclusion. Back at the same meeting in October, TJ alumnus Brandon Kim asked you all not to forget about low-income Asian-American students since he was one himself. We are sending you all a statistical analysis that we have done for US News of World Report, top fifty high schools, showing that schools that use lotteries in admissions deliver significantly better representation outcomes than schools with other systems. Regardless of whether you consider the top ten, twenty, or fifty schools, forty percent of them use lotteries. They better lead to represent a diversity and they can top national rankings too. Regardless of either system you choose, TJ Alumni Action Group advocates for a minimum allotment of seats at TJ on a middle school by middle school level or at high school pyramid level. Evaluate applicants according to the circumstances and opportunities afforded to them, not who seems to be the best, quote-unquote, overall. This includes socioeconomic status, available STEM courses, available after-school programs for each individual. The school board has a third choice too. You all welcomed Dr. Lisa Williams with open arms at the last meeting, but you're making the admissions decision before she officially starts at FCPS next month. Please set standards and metrics for an equitable admission system and then empower Dr. Brabham and Dr. Williams to select and design what that system may be. Thank you. Happy holidays to you and your families, and thank you all for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Bua Tang.
Hello, school board. Many of you guys already recognize me, so respectfully, I'll just skip them of formalities and just kind of get to the point. I have written letters, emails, tweets about how this year is absolutely destroying students. And in all honesty, I've seen close to nothing to prove that you are listening to us. I am really not too sure what else there is for students to do. Students are surrounded by so much grief, trauma, death, and we are expected to continue on as if this is normal. This is not normal. We are not last-year students. Students across the country are sitting in front of their computer screens, wondering when they are going to catch a break, and the break never comes. I want to say for the record that I love my teachers. I love all the teachers in this county, and we wouldn't have gotten this far without them, but we as a county have to do better. And I'm so tired of hearing that we are trying and seeing nothing change. If you ask me about aspiration in any other subject, I'll tell you, I love aspiration, but not right now. I am tired of the same aspirational goals. I need concrete actions and we all need it to happen right now. It's becoming too much. I can't even take a mental health day for myself before things becoming stacked on and I end up worse off than I was before. I am tired of the "we see you" emails, of the "I hear you" tweets. I want intention. I said every meeting when I was student rep, where is the intention? We need intention. I need intentional things. And on a quick tangent, to hear this board preach so much about anti-racism and student well-being and to witness you all argue for hours against simply taking a look at an opportunity for Black and Brown students, honestly, I'm sorry, but I'm ashamed. We could give you one conflict, one issue, and you'll spend a million minutes to discussing why you can't help rather than spending a hundred trying to help us. The students we are watching and we're tired. There's only so much left in us right now, so something needs to happen right now. You cannot blame us for failing. You cannot blame us for poor attendance. You cannot blame us for anything. We're not the problem. I need us to be taken seriously. We're focused more on sending students back to a building rather than making our current education livable. We are in the present and there will not be a future if we can't fix it right now, so we really need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vijay Bethula. Mr. Bethula, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Vijay Bethula. I've been living in Fairfax County for more than twenty years. As a part of a small business, we provide employment to hundreds of people residing in Northern Virginia. Many businesses move here due to high-quality education in our area. A study by a prominent economist found that a lottery will reduce the ranking of TJ from number one in the country to number six in Fairfax County. That's a significant drop, which will result in cascading effect on rest of the schools in this county. Businesses will move away from the county if the education standards come down as FCPS reputation is one of the most attractive features for the majority of the population living here today despite the high cost of living. We personally chose Fairfax County as our home for the same exact reasons. We all know that some kids are inherently gifted irrespective of their race, ethnicity, and income levels. Early identification in school improves the likelihood that gifts will be developed into talents. There should be multi-phased approach for identifying gifted students at various levels, starting early, as giftedness is dynamic, not static. Talent comes in various forms and it has to be scouted by employing a combination of objective and subjective methods like testing and assessments, targeted recruiting activities, teacher observations, and community partnership. This needs a lot of planning and training kits from early on. Failing grades are already spiking across the schools in FCPS. Removal of tests for TJ will guarantee underprepared students will be selected. Sending underprepared students into an advanced program like TJ will result in failing grades in TJ as well. And this will send the message to the business community that Fairfax County does not believe in excellence and any businesses striving for excellence will move out of our area. This is exactly what's happening in New York City and San Francisco with their education system crumbling. Fairfax laws will be gained for other counties and other states. The board canceled the test without a viable alternative plan in place with no proper notification and no input from the community. These decisions were made based on input from handful of activists and no proper input from community and parents. Due to the presence of technology companies, there is significant demand for STEM in our area. I request the board make plans for more schools like TJ to accommodate the demand and address lack of representation of underrepresented minorities. Identify why FCPS outreach efforts to Blacks and Hispanics had no monitoring, no measurable metrics, and no accountability. With experience gained in running successful STEM school like TJ, we can elevate the standards of other FCPS schools rather than diluting the existing standards of this prestigious institution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Campbell and I'm speaking tonight as the Vice President of Fairfax County SEPTA. First, we want to express our gratitude to the school board for incorporating so much of SEPTA's feedback and questions in your work session earlier this week. We sent you a lot of information to digest in a very short amount of time, and we very much appreciate how you took our work to heart. Thank you. The theme of this year's Inclusive Schools Week, "The Time for Inclusion is Now," couldn't be more appropriate. Our country's educational system has been turned on its head over the last nine months. If ever there was an opportunity to reimagine our schools to be truly inclusive, it is now. True inclusion in FCPS will require a culture shift that starts with leadership in central office. To illustrate the current culture, consider the FCPS video intended to help families determine whether their child should be screened for Child Find. Within approximately one minute fifteen seconds, the word "behavior" or "problem behavior" is used six times to describe preschool children. The word "behavior" implies willfulness by the student to act as such. The focus of this video could be on more objective measures such as whether a child is meeting their milestones or whether a child is having difficulty expressing or processing emotions, et cetera. Instead, the FCPS video emphasizes that families should primarily think about behaviors when determining whether or not to seek special education services. Intentional or not, this sets a tone that continues to frame the manifestations of these children's disabilities as willful choices rather than developmental deficits as they age through elementary and then secondary grades. Severe behaviors are preventable, not inevitable, when the student has access to appropriate resources in staffing, services, and training. We are hopeful that Dr. Boyd's new leadership will bring about a significant shift in mindset that focuses on the need to proactively address, through services and accommodations, the underlying issues that severe behaviors are communicating rather than relying on reactive measures to retrain a child's response. One important ways, way to address these underlying issues is through the work done by our incredible related service providers. Unfortunately, we know our related service providers are understaffed. Current caseloads in FCPS are not in accordance with evidence-based practice. Research supports that educational provider caseloads should be determined through a workload analysis approach rather than the medical caseload model used by FCPS due to the additional administrative work that service providers have in schools. We urge the school board to take the first steps necessary to begin this shift by first adopting a top-down culture that behavior is communication of unmet needs and also modifying FCPS's approach to staffing standards to reflect a workload analysis approach to caseloads as we enter preparations for the next budget cycle. We also invite the school board and FCPS leadership to join us on Monday night at seven PM for a screening of The Kids We Lose, a documentary about the human side of being a child or student with behavioral challenges. Dr. Ross Green, whose research the film is based on, will join us for discussion after the viewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alice Guo.
Good evening. I'm Alice Guo. I'm here to talk about your, the school policies. Millions came to America after being inspired by the Declaration of Independence. We are installed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So twenty-three years ago, I came to America believing that in America, one can work extremely hard achieving true happiness and liberty. Colors or race were not the lens I looked through at America, or rather, work ethics. My grandma always said, "You don't get anything free just because you were born. You have to earn it." She taught us about hard work. My mother always said, "You don't get anything just because you need it. You have to earn it." My mother built my mental toughness. Now, I'm proud to tell my children, "You don't get anything free just because you want it. You have to earn it." So my question to you, does work ethics discriminate colors? Before 2020, my husband and I had not seen our world through the lens of colors. Thanks to FCPS, we are now looking at everything with the race lens on. Within three weeks, we ran through the new TJ High School Admission Reform that includes lowering enrollment standards and race quotas to match the demographics of our county. So is it not about having to earn it based on merit, but based on color? Do you really want our children to grow up in a nation where they will not be judged by the content of their character, but the color of their skin? You call this progressive? I call this regressive. So stop the discrimination. I want to firmly remind you, the people of all colors do not come to America because it is such a racist country, but because it is a great country with equal opportunities for all. Equal opportunities do not mean equal outcome, which is largely influenced by effort and motivation. I also want to firmly remind you that Asian-American community fully embraces the equal opportunity through hard work. The high academic performance is no accident. So let our kids earn their right to TJ fairly. So stop the racial discrimination. The children, the families, the cultures which believe in, you have to earn it through hard work, should not be the victim of a racist, color-based quota policy in Fairfax County. You have provoked a sleeping giant, we, the taxpayers. We no longer tolerate your idiotic policies of cutting off nose to spite face. So stop the systematic racist discrimination against colored Asian communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anil Advani.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm the father of two school-aged children in Fairfax and a health policy professor who has administered federal programs for underserved communities across the US. My scientific career was greatly inspired by a Nigerian mathematician who challenged me to study the mathematics of the human brain. I care deeply that many more such mathematically creative minds should be nurtured, both as students and teachers. The question is, how do we find and nurture young minds from each of our social communities here in Fairfax? For the disadvantaged African-American and Hispanic communities especially, neuropsychological testing and its high school correlates are essential for accurately diagnosing and screening mathematically gifted children. This is because those children may not have the shiny curated resumes that well-off children do to succeed in holistic admissions. Banning objective tests just washes away problems and does no favor to the truly disadvantaged student. The analysis document from FCPS doesn't address this issue at all. Simply superficially pointing to inequities and providing racial balancing remedies does nothing for gifted African-American and Hispanic kids. Let's look instead at what neighboring Prince George's County, Maryland, with a well-educated majority African-American population uses for admissions criteria to the four, five hundred spots in their selective magnet schools. It is a simple, transparent, fair, and objective criterion. They use your core middle school GPA to account for hard work, average with your PSAT eight slash nine score, which is nationally normed and includes both mathematics and language components. Are any of the Black or Hispanic students who make up seventy-five percent of the student population, their parents, school board members, or school administrators fighting against the use of these tests? Clearly not. The same holds for Florida's number-one public high school, the School for Advanced Studies in Miami-Dade County, which is seventy-four percent Hispanics, and uses the Accuplacer Next Generation College Basic Skills Assessment Test. Somehow, the name- Somehow, the nation's number-one Hispanic-majority selective magnet school also believes that standardized testing is important to transparently and rigorously select mathematically and scientifically gifted children. Any method for selecting students for gifted or advanced programs in FCPS should have the integrity to ensure that the highest-scoring students within any racial group or partition are selected. The simple suggestion to achieve this is to combine the two options that FCPS has presented to you. Take the hundred top students region-wide and use an existing test such as SOLs for this year or PSATs or the ACT, et cetera, and integrate this with the holistic criteria for the other four hundred students within each regional pathway to ensure social equity. Using this approach, the school board would present a positive vision for encouraging the growth of creativity and academic excellence at FCPS and would ensure that all students of any race at any school are absolutely encouraged to excel and move forward in mathematics and science. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have video testimony from Susan Danowitz, Raina Fisher, Lisa Raj Singh, and Sarah Bigley.
Hello. My name is Sarah Bigley and I'm from Solar On The Schools, a student-led environmental advocacy group in Fairfax County Public Schools. We ask that when considering the roof replacement for Hunter's Woods Elementary School, we keep the environmental initiative outlined in the jet in mind. We really appreciate the recent steps that FCPS has taken to buy renewable energies through PPA, but we must expand these initiatives to ensure a better future for all of FCPS students. One of the plans put forth by the jet is for county and school operations to be carbon-neutral by 2040. We must take significant steps to lower the energy use of FCPS buildings and to switch to clean energy systems so we can reach this goal. Ways we can do this include installing solar energy on our schools as soon as possible, ensuring renovations and constructions of the current schools are designed with the intent of net-zero energy, and transitioning our bus fleet to electric vehicles. There are many environmental, economic, and educational benefits to transitioning to renewable energy. Arlington County already has three net-zero energy schools and they have been immensely successful. Our group recently had a presentation with Robert Winstead from VMDO, the architecture firm that designed Arlington's net-zero schools. The Discovery School was their first net-zero energy school and it is a fantastic model for FCPS schools. Discovery, which includes a photovoltaic system and a geothermal heating and cooling system, was built under budget at a cost of less than some elementary schools in Fairfax County. The school district spends approximately seventeen cents per square foot of energy compared to the $1.29 per square foot for the other schools in Arlington. This means that they save $118,000 a year just for that one school. They also integrate their solar panel system into experiments and other lessons for their students using their interactive data dashboards. The school encourages environmental stewardship in their students, which is imperative to our future health and well-being. Again, if we're to reach these goals, we must start implementing these environmental initiatives right now. Thank you very much for your time and we look forward to the changes in 2021.
Hello.
We're Solar On The Schools, a group of students across Fairfax County representing over ten high schools in the area, and we want to expand the use of renewable energy in the county. I'm Ronnie Fisher. I'm a senior at Oakton High School. I'm in the Providence District and I want solar energy so we can use those energy savings on programs for students.
Hi, my name is Gidica Gorki and I'm a junior at Chantilly High School. And I am located in the Sully District. I want solar on our schools because it will help our planet become more eco-friendly and will teach students the importance of conservation of our resources.
Hi, my name is Lucas Bickford. I go to Woodson High School in the Braddock District. And I want to put solar panels on our school to set a good example for the rest of Virginia.
Sarah, and I'm a sophomore at Oakton High School and I live in the Sully District. I want solar in FCPS schools because schools use so much energy and so it's vital for them to cut down on this energy to help out the environment.
Hi, I'm Carolyn from Oakton High School in the Providence District and I want solar on our schools because it will set an example and a precedent for climate-friendly infrastructure in our county.
My name is Sarah Kim and I am a senior at Woodson High School. I'm from the Braddock District and we want solar in our schools to help educate and urge students to become ethical and global citizens and leaders in our community. We also want to share the importance of being environmentally conscious.
Hi, I'm Sophie Gideon. I go to Hayfield. I'm in the Lee District and I want to help bring solar energy to FCPS so I can give back to the environment and staff members who have contributed to my education.
Hi, my name's Fatima Salem. I'm a junior at Marshall High School in the Dransville District and I want solar on my school so that we can cut down on the extreme use of energy in Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you.
I'm Brian, a student at WT Woodson High School and a member of the Braddock District. Being a junior and a proud member of the Solar On The Schools Club, I want solar on the schools because, to put it simply, this is our future. Solar On The Schools could educate students of all ages within the school system and will ultimately benefit our environment for future and current generations. Thank you.
I'm Walter Dusko and I'm a junior at Marshall High School. I'm in the Dransville District and I want solar on the schools because I believe it's imperative to set the precedent for future generations of the value and importance of energy conservation. Through Solar On The Schools, future generations of children will learn the importance of renewable energy and helping the environment by seeing it in action.
Hello, school board. Today, I'd like to share with you words from my fellow TJ alum, class of ninety-nine, Duke grad, and holder of both a Master of Bioethics and a JD from UPenn, Nicholas Vaughn.
Thanks, Susan. My parents had no choice but to participate in segregated institutions. The heroism of their generation was the stuff of legend. My ambition was to be worthy of that legacy. Integration of traditionally white spaces like Thomas Jefferson seemed my duty. Twenty years later, the racist experiences of current students and recent graduates mirror my own. I failed through sheer force of my own excellence to convince the closeted and open white supremacists in Fairfax County that Black Americans are equal to their white peers in the pursuit of academic excellence. After all, why else would TJ simply refuse to meaningfully integrate? TJ is in many ways a reflection of this nation. There is a tension between creating a better society for everyone and the unencumbered pursuit of individual ambition. You see, classes may be more rigorous at TJ, but standards for adherence to the honor code are not. National Merit semifinalists are lauded and produced en masse, and yet stories featuring the application of more courage are rare. Perhaps that is too high a standard, but young people are pioneering breakthroughs for STEM challenges that plague the modern era: climate change, vaccine development, and data privacy. But can anyone honestly imagine Greta Thunberg attending Thomas Jefferson? You must attract a thoroughly different kind of student to prove that Thomas Jefferson isn't just a private academy for the children of ambitious Northern Virginian parents that taxpayers have been duped into funding at the expense of their own children. I am not just talking about fixing an environment where students and faculty are comfortable being openly racist and have been for more than twenty years. I'm talking about fixing an environment that teaches that intelligent behavior is simply doing what is most expedient to advance one's own self-interest. I am talking about fixing an environment that teaches that success can only be measured in numbers on transcripts or in bank accounts rather than being part of scholarship as a mechanism to improve the human condition. TJ should move to a full merit lottery system or you simply need to close the school. Otherwise, we're left hoping that perhaps a slightly more numerous, slightly more diverse class will succeed in integrating Thomas Jefferson where my peers and I failed.
As a young child, I was of course delighted and proud to be placed into the gifted program or the advanced academic program here in Fairfax County. It wasn't until my younger sister was denied the gifted label, her confidence shattered, that I questioned my giftedness. How was it that the same girl who solved one-thousand-piece puzzles and taught multiplication to her stuffed animals felt crushed at such a young age? How was it that we, by categorizing our youth by supposed intelligence, are handcuffing our own intellectual growth? At age six, the same age students began testing into AAP, I remember my parents reading to me every night and enrolling me in summer science programs. I attended Greenbrier West and Rocky Run Middle School, both well-funded schools in affluent areas. My elementary school in Taiwan, a top-ranked country in education, offered advanced academics without separating students by ability. I was not gifted by birth. I was a product of a solid education. Since last year, I've read Limitless Mind by education pioneer Joe Bowler and dozens of scholarly articles that confirm my belief. Up to eighty-eight percent of students placed in lower-level tracks failed to catch up to their high-achieving peers. Another study with twelve thousand students across the US observed that none of the students in the lowest reading group ever caught up to their high-achieving peers. None of the levels, including the highest, indicated improved achievement. This suppression of growth for all students, including the gifted, for up to six years in AAP's case is tragic but hardly surprising. Once you've dictated a student's performance as lower level, their academic achievement becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. Even though I benefited from AAP, I felt unyielding pressure to be the smartest in the room and to answer questions instead of asking them for fear of losing my gifted label. Reading Carol Dweck's book, Mindset, grounded in science what I had struggled with for years, her studies indicated that those labeled "smart" consistently chose easier tasks, whereas those labeled as "hardworking" challenged themselves much more often. Gifted programs suppress even the gifted. For the past nine months, I've worked with other students researching and speaking with experts, including Dr. Alka Hansen from Education Reimagined, who has shared her work with revamping elementary school education. She explains that other parts of the country, including New York City and San Francisco, have led the way in seeing success with removing their gifted programs. Changing TJ was a temporary solution. The root issue stems from the simple act of labeling such young students as gifted. I implore you all, universalize AAP and remove the practice of separating students at such young ages. Thank you.
That was our final video.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mulberg. Now I'll call on Mr. Anubudha for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Fairfax County community. As always, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to speak to all of you, to our community this evening. I will keep my remarks short because I know the meeting is long and everything, but there are a couple of things that I think are really important that I want to say. The first is this, in response to the recent news and headlines about the increase in failing grades that have come out, you know, over this past quarter that we have just finished in this incredibly unusual school year. Unfortunately, I think in many ways Kimberly Boating, in her speech before me, encapsulated, touched on what students are feeling. Now, somewhere in the space between, "We need to be back in school five days a week, full-time, in-person, right this second, and no kid should ever step foot into the school building because there's a deadly virus that could kill us all." I feel like students, many students, feel like their voices aren't being heard. They feel like somehow they're being forgotten, even in the midst of all the conversations being about them. Now, I know that students aren't forgotten. I know that all of us, the reason we're here today is because we care about students. But I don't think anyone can blame students for feeling that way when you're listening and hearing the amount of suffering, the amount of heartache, the amount of stress that goes into just simply waking up every morning to go to school. One of my friends said it best when they were saying that it doesn't matter what happens to our school buildings in a week or in a month or when there's a vaccine that's widely available. It doesn't matter because there's real suffering that's going to happen tomorrow when students open up their laptops to go to school, when there are grades that are permanently enshrined in our rolling gradebook that seniors are submitting to colleges to see even though they are learning in a model that they've never used before and they're failing because of it. See, I'm caught in this place between what I know the county is working on doing to support students and the hard work that's going into that and the actual reality of what it's like to be a student in Fairfax County every day right now. The place that I'm caught in fills me with hope because I see what is possible and I see the hard work that our school system is putting, antecaring for students. Unfortunately, many students, parents for that matter, don't see that hard work. They don't realize that and as a result, students feel that their voices, that their complaints, that their struggles are falling on deaf ears. This is dangerous because it creates this pragmatic feeling that there's no hope in what is going on right now and that the best solution is to just give up. I don't know what we can do to immediately help students when they wake up to go to school tomorrow, but what I do know is that this situation is urgent. We need actual change to our system that supports students in what is going on right now, that recognizes we are learning in the midst of a global pandemic and that we've never done this before and that what was going on when we were in school in person cannot be what we're trying to institute in our virtual model because students simply cannot handle it. We need to recognize that as soon as possible and address those concerns in a public manner so that students know that their voices are being listened to. I know their voices are being listened to because just this week I had the honor and the privilege of getting to meet with county leadership to discuss some of the meaningful ways we're looking at addressing some of the systemic issues we're facing in our county right now to make sure that students are not only passing their classes, but they're thriving in their classes in a virtual model. I got to see it in that meeting. I got to listen to that feedback. I got to hear what was going on and I got to provide some of my own feedback. Not every student in the county was in that meeting. In fact, almost no other students were in that meeting. How do they feel? What do they know about what is going on to help them? And how long will that take for that help to be there? I know change takes time and I know that there's no easy solution to what is going on, but I just want everyone listening to know that this is how students are feeling. This is what is happening. In the massive debates that are going on about what school needs to look like and what's failing and what's not failing, students are just simply suffering. It's no longer about whether we want to go back or whether we want to stay virtual, whether it's safe or not. It's just we want to get through. We want to survive. We want to make it without being told that we're failing for classes, even though we don't even know what we're doing because we're learning in a model we've never used before. I will be writing a letter to Dr. Braybrand, the school board, and the rest of the leadership staff about what my recommendations are and in talking with the Student Advisory Council for moving forward, particularly in regards to grading, to ensure that students can, you know, be met with some grace in this time seems graceless. I'm honored to be given the opportunity to write this letter and I'm thankful to Dr. Braybrand and the rest of the Fairfax County Public Schools leadership team for everything that, again, I know that they are doing to address student needs and the concerns of students across the county. I'm here to tell students, that any students or parents are listening, that our leadership does care. They are listening. But I'm here to tell our leadership that students don't know that. Students need to be shown that. And more, most importantly, students need to be given the opportunity to succeed through change through the system. Way back when, when school first shut down in March, we were given a system that, you know, was a mess and rightfully so because no one had ever done it before. It was a mess all over the country. And right now, it's better, but in ways, it's also worse. We need to keep tweaking what we're doing till we find some sense of normalcy in a situation that is anything but normal. For us to sit back and pretend like it's not, like it's working when students are saying it's not would simply just mean failing students altogether. Thankfully, I know our county won't do that. I just urge us to do it quicker. Moving on from that piece, I want to take a moment to speak to all my seniors out there, all the fellow class of 2021 members and their parents who may be listening. I'm switching gears kind of fast and kind of abruptly. But I recognize that I haven't done this yet and it kind of shocked me when I realized I hadn't. But I want to take a moment to congratulate any senior who has taken steps to kind of map out their post-secondary plans for what life is going to look like after high school. I mean, whether that's talking to your- I mean, whether that's talking to your teacher, your counselors, your parents about opportunities that exist out after high school ends, or whether that's filling out a college application, submitting a college application, or even getting accepted into university at this point. I just want to say congrats. It's one thing for us to have weathered a seemingly unweatherable storm that has been the last seven months, but it's another thing for us to be able to keep moving forward and even looking forward. Because that's hard on its own, but with all the fog that is right now, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all of you who have been able to do that. I know it's not easy, I know it's hard. And I want to address the fact that I've gotten a couple of notes from different places about dealing with stress, particularly after submitting a college application and waiting for that, you know, that decision and not knowing what's going to happen. I just want to let all the students and supervisors know that I'm experiencing the same thing too. That stress is near-universal for this time, and I want to reflect on something that I had a conversation I had with a group of my friends earlier that kind of helped me get through the moment because I feel like there's no need for any additional stress onto everything that's going on. So I just want to take a moment to go through this conversation, kind of explain how it helped me reframe the situation. We were talking about how the next few months are going to be some of the most stressful, which was wait because we're waiting for college decisions and what if we get rejected and all of that. And we were thinking about how that's even possible considering the last four months have been some of the most stressful in our lives ever. And we were reflecting on what our lives might look like a year, two years from now. And we remembered that one of our friends, who is no longer with us, won't ever get to submit the application, won't ever get to find out what, you know, what school she'll get into whenever we get to leave home and go to college. And it made us realize that there is joy to be found in the anxiety and in the stress and in the mess that is this current moment. And I know that sounds counterintuitive, but it's true. And we won't ever have these days back, as weird and as messed up as they are, sit and revel in the fact that we're here and that we're present and that someday we'll get to look back on this and say that this was an experience that united all of us as the Class of 2021. So I just wanted to say that, I know that that was super important and that was sitting on my heart, and I just want to get that out there. And finally, hopefully ending on a more positive and uplifting note. I want to give a quick shout-out to my high school's choral department, the chorus department run by Mr. Rodriguez. They found a super-duper creative way to say thank you to the staff members in our school. A video that is up on YouTube is called "The Job," you can check it out if you want. It was edited by one of our seniors, Risha Hussein. She, the entire chorus department, it's basically them singing about how great a job they think our teacher's doing and how thankful we students are across the county for all the work that they've been doing. And I know I say this time and time again when I get to speak here at the board meetings about how thankful I am to teachers. But it's entirely different when they can do it in such an artful and creative way and use their talents to uplift the voice of students and say thank you to our teachers. I thought that was super-powerful, and I'm super-appreciative for it. And I kind of want to re-echo their sentiments to all the teachers at FCPS just one more time to say thank you because there's no amount of gratitude that can reach, that can make it enough because we're still thankful for everything we're doing. So on that note, I want to say thank you to all of the hard work that the county leadership is doing, that our school board is doing. And again, I know that these times are murky, but we'll move forward. And I'm appreciative for this opportunity again. So, thank you, everyone, and with that, I give it back to you, Dr. Anderson.
Nathan, you make it hard to follow you. Thank you so much for your very powerful sentiments. You certainly have provided the board, the staff, and our community a lot to reflect on. I very much look forward to reading the letter that you will be sending to the board and to the superintendent. But thank you again for your powerful testimony and for your optimism and for your encouraging words and for you to remind us to continue to find the joy in small things even during these times. So very much appreciated that, thank you. And I'll call on Mr. Frisch for an announcement regarding the renaming of Mosby Woods Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have not had the level of public participation that we'd hoped for, and therefore we're working with staff to come up with additional options and to solicit additional community input. More information about these two items will be announced as details are worked out with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of our mid-year budget review.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. It's my pleasure, we're going to do our mid-year budget presentation, budget review for FY 2021. And I am going to ask our Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Lee Burden, to share the presentation with you. And I want to remind the board and the community that our mid-year budget will be discussed at our December fifteenth work session. And then there will be action scheduled for the board at our next board meeting on December seventeenth. So without further ado, Ms. Burden, would you like to begin the FY 2021 mid-year budget review?
Good evening, Chairman Anderson, school board members, and Dr. Braybrand. The mid-year review offers an opportunity to revise the fiscal '21 budget based on current year trends and any new requirements that have become known since the year-end budget review was approved in late July of 2020. The agenda item is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by updated fund statements. And as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, we have a work session on Tuesday, December fifteenth, where mid-year can be discussed in greater detail. And the data for this report is as of the end of October. On page one, for the School Operating Fund revenue, there are three changes. The beginning balance changed due to a sales tax increase of 3.1 million, less an expenditure increase of .9 million for a net change of 2.1 million. And both of these changes are due to a fiscal '20 adjustment that occurred after year-end. The other primary changes are for grants that support the School Operating Fund. Our IDEA grant award increased 1.2 million in fiscal '21. The preschool grant increased a small amount. And these grant increases are offset by a decrease to the fiscal '20 adjustments, so a net increase of about .4 million. And a change to the fiscal '22 beginning balance to provide a supplement to the Food Services Fund of 7.5 million. So the total revenue changes are about 10 million. And the revenue adjustments include a corresponding expenditure adjustment. So displayed on page two are the recommended School Operating Fund expenditure changes. Revenue's going up 10 million, and expenditures are also at 10 million, leaving no additional funds available. Grant expenditure changes are the recognition of the offsetting IDEA awards of .4 million. Position authority is also recommended but does not require any funding. Recall that at the adoption of the fiscal '21 approved budget last May, funds to address the COVID pandemic were allocated as placeholder funding with the understanding that we would be adding twenty-four and a half T-Specs, thirteen and a half ESPETS, ten psychologists, and ten social workers. So we don't need to change the budget for the funding, but we do need authority to establish those positions. And finally, a transfer to the Food and Nutrition Services Fund of 9.6 million. Our latest projection showed an expected supplemental need of 10 million, but we got an additional 400,000 from the state, so that reduced that projection from 10 million to 9.6. Again, this is the current projection, but a return to school for in-person instruction will change participation rates, and that will impact the projection. The School Operating Fund summary on page three shows what I just reviewed in detail. And there's also a beginning balance summary for fiscal '22. We ended up with 24.4 million from the fiscal '20 budget to fund the beginning balance of the fiscal '22 budget. But we will use a portion of that to supplement Food and Nutrition Services, leaving a beginning balance for fiscal '22 of 16.9 million. Page four shows the fiscal '21 enrollment update. This reflects actual enrollment as of September 30 compared to the projection. As you know, we are down about 7,680 students, or four and a half percent, and this decrease is believed to be temporary. Other special groups' official reporting is not as of September 30. It's December for Special Education, January for Non-Traditional Students, and March for FSEP. And so we're still waiting on the official enrollment for those groups. You should also know that between fall of 2019 and fall of 2020, enrollment statewide decreased by about 38,000, or 3%. Almost all school divisions experienced enrollment loss. And again, these enrollment losses in Fairfax and across the state are expected to be temporary. Page five shows changes to other funds, starting with school construction. The change in the expenditure adjustments for projects after the year-end resulted in an increase to the beginning balance of about 300,000. Authorized bonds increased 163 million for additional projects from the 2019 bond referendum. Also on page five is Food and Nutrition Services. Changes due to adjustments reported after year-end resulted in an increase to their reserve of approximately 26,000. Again, we will receive additional state revenue. Federal aid is projected to increase, but food sales are expected to be negligible since continuation of the summer program, which allows all children in Fairfax to eat free, has been continued through June 30. As a result, we are currently recommending a transfer of 9.6 million from School Operating Fund sources to supplement the Food Services Fund revenue shortfall. On the expenditure side, we've reviewed the expenditure budget and believe we can reduce it 16 million due to reduced costs in materials and food. So overall, we are projecting an additional revenue need of 9.6 million to be funded from the fiscal '22 beginning balance held in reserve and disclosed in the joint fiscal forecast last week. We are also utilizing the remaining Food and Nutrition Services reserve to reduce the reliance on School Operating Fund supplements. If you look at the next item, it's Adult and Community Ed, or the ACE Fund on page five. The total fund is 8.4 million. There is a slight increase to the beginning balance due to adjustments after year-end, and there's also a net increase of .2 million due to the Adult Ed and Family Literacy Grant that was awarded in August. And you'll see that increase in both revenue and expenditures. Also on page five are the Grants and Self-Supporting Programs. A slight change to the fiscal '21 beginning balance, again, due to adjustments after year-end, and then an 8.5 million increase due to new awards or adjustments to the current year awards. And details about the increase in grants can be found on page six. Also in the Grants Fund is the Summer School Sub-Fund. This fund totals 19.4 million. There's a small change of $7,000 in the beginning balance, again, due to year-end adjustments, and a corresponding increase in the sub-funds reserve. On page seven is the School Insurance Fund, which is Workers' Comp and Risk Management. In this fund, there is a $12,000 change in the beginning balance due to year-end adjustments that weren't known at the final budget review and a corresponding increase to the fund's allocated reserve. That's followed by the Health and Flexible Benefits Fund, an increase of .9 million to the fiscal '21 beginning balance, again, due to adjustments after year-end. And we've also updated our estimates for revenue and are projecting a net increase of 3.6 million due to increases in contributions, increases in pharmacy rebates, offset by reductions in interest income and flex fund revenue decreases, again, for a net of 3.6 million increase. Expenditures have also been recalculated based on more current trends and reflect a net increase of 3.3 million due to higher-than-projected claims. We do have some lower administrative costs that are offsetting that, and also some lower flex fund reimbursements. These changes result in an increase to the Healthcare's Premium Stabilization Reserve, excuse me, of 1.2 million. Also on page seven is the ERFC Fund. The beginning balance reflects an increase of 14.7 million to the fiscal '21 beginning balance due to adjustments reported after year-end. Investment income is up 15.9 million, but offset by greater fees of 1.1 for a net of 14.7. And even though this seems large, it's primarily due to timing, since the final portfolio values are not available until after year-end is completed. Other adjustments based on more current information for fiscal '21, net to 19.2 million, so that the fund's ending balance shows an increase. Also on this page is the OPEB Trust Fund, and the beginning balance reflects an increase of 3 million due to a year-ended adjustment in fiscal '20. And this adjustment results in an increase to the projected ending balance for the fund of 3 million. The fund statements for each fund begins on page eight and reflect the changes that I've shared with you from the narrative section of the mid-year report. The last page of the document provides summary information about the current year or fiscal '21 grants and a final update for the fiscal '20 grants as well. And again, one more reminder that we have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, December 15. So any detailed questions can be addressed then, with action scheduled at the regular school board meeting on December 17. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burden. As Dr. Braybrand shared, there will be a work session on this mid-year budget review on December 15. At this time, I call on Ms. Pekarsky for the motion.
Madam Chair, I had my hand up for-
Oh, I'm so sorry, I did not see that there were hands up for questions.
I put it on the computer just because I thought that'd be the only way you'd see it.
Go ahead, Megan, Ms. McLoughlin.
Thank you. Yes, I know, Ms. Burden, you mentioned that we're going to be having a work session on this, so I'm not going to ask detailed questions, but I did just want to cite a couple of things that maybe you'll need to have prepared for that meeting. The first one, again, doesn't need to be tonight, but just what basically created the 1.1 million in additional investment service costs? The second one is that the enrollment data, where we're down 7,800 students, what date is that pulling from? Because I heard some questions and concerns from parents about when they received requests from the school about their students being enrolled, and they said it was after the September 30 date and they had withdrawn their students. So I just want to know how current that 7,800 number is. And then finally, I will definitely want to have extensive conversation with my colleagues about the Food and Nutritional Services needing a $9.6 million infusion of funding that's going to affect our beginning balance. As we talked about this at the August work session, many of us on the board expressed concern of drawing down our beginning balance of potentially $10 million or more. So I think that's going to require a great deal of conversation to where we are at. That's a big number, and I thought we were taking advantage of the federal program feeding every single child in Fairfax County regardless of financial need in order to get 100,000 meals a day and then get federal reimbursement. So I'm going to want to understand why the 10 million or the 9.6 million. So just wanted to give a heads-up on those three things for now. And I know we've got a lot on our plate, colleagues, so I don't need Ms. Burden to answer it tonight unless she's got something quick she wants to say right away. Otherwise, we can talk about the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. Did you want to respond quickly or wait until the 15th?
Well, the question about ERFC and Food Services, those are longer discussions, so we'll definitely do that at the work session. We'll be ready for that. The enrollment numbers that were included are as of September 30. But we'll have the enrollment people there at the work session as well, so if you have other questions, they'll be able to address them.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would ask that, since that enrollment number is September 3, that it's absolutely going to be important that we have the most current numbers on our enrollment- our enrollment, especially if it's going to be a notable variance off the 7,800.
Thank you, so noted.
If I could, Ms. Burden, September 3 or September 30?
September 30.
Yeah. The September 30, the reason she's brought it as the financial Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services is that's the report by which we do the state ADM revenue, that the revenue from the state comes based on that September 30 report. But I know what you're saying is you'd like to see where is enrollment now? Is it up? Is it down? And how may that impact us? The state right now had agreed to hold harmless the ADM September 30 and wait until the March 30 ADM comes in. So we'll have more information on that, and we might-- you're right on about what's our trend? Are we seeing the opportunity for more? And as we do return to school, especially in January, we'll have time prior to March 30 to see enrollment, which I believe will increase as we return more groups of students to school. But we'll be glad to talk about the work session.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I know that many of us on the board have had inquiries from the public on the number, and I just know we want to have the accurate information. And yes, hopefully, the state will hold us harmless.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Burden, as always, thank you so much for your very comprehensive approach to briefing this board. It is greatly appreciated. I have two questions that I will want to unpack a bit more when we meet later this month. One is on the status of our impact aid submissions to find out where we are on funding for that. And then the second piece is in the cost area of where we are, or estimated cost for the classroom aids or classroom monitors that we are looking to hire and how that will impact our operating budget.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be ready to address those.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, and I'll call on Ms. Pakarski for the motion.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Anderson. I move that in the school year 2021, for schools with an AAP local Level IV or AAP Local IV center, the pool of second-grade students to be screened for AAP Level IV services will be identified by piloting the use of local building norms while ensuring that any student who meets the national norm is also identified for screening. In schools that do not yet have a local Level IV program, national norms will continue to be used to identify students for eligibility screening.
Thank you, Ms. Pakarski. Is there a second?
Yes, I'd like to add--
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Pakarski, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I will briefly. I do hope my colleagues have had the opportunity to read the information that was emailed and posted about this topic, and I do thank Dr. Presidio and his team for providing those documents so quickly. In the external AAP study that the prior board initiated, one of the expert recommendations to increase equitable access and ensure we are identifying students that have high potential to do well in our AAP program was to implement local norms for the student identification pool. This evidence-based support was followed up by the letter from our researchers that stated that this would be a quote "low-risk, high-reward" strategy that would likely lead to improved equity of participation in the near future," end quote. I think it is imperative that we implement these low-cost recommendations in a thoughtful way. This pilot will allow the system to gather data and track progress and impact for a program that we know is important to this community. During our numerous TJ conversations this year, there was emphatic support amongst our community for this board to support equitable access to AAP and strengthen the pipeline issues that still exist. In fact, some schools and FCPS continue to have zero identified students for AAP consideration. I think it is imperative for the public to understand that this motion will not have any obvious impact to our current AAP process. External and parent referrals to AAP, which already account for 70% of applicants, will continue. And I do hope that my colleagues will be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pakarski. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, thank you. In a 2019 article that came out about the importance of local norms in gifted education, Dr. Jonathan Plucker, who we were lucky enough to have as part of our team, who looked at AAP equity here in Fairfax County, gave some really great quotes about local norms that I would just like to share with my colleagues today. Local norms find advanced students hidden in plain sight. When educators examine performance relative to peers' performance within each individual school building, gifted education is about determining which children are not being challenged by the existing grade-level instruction in a specific school setting, and every building needs to proactively identify and serve those kids. I think this is a really good step in making sure that the kids who need something more than the regular curriculum in a building, that we are finding them and we are helping them early, become, just like we want every kid here in Fairfax County, Dr. Brabran always says, "by name and by need." And this is just one of those ways that is, in the world of things we do here, an easy fix, to be able to help find those kids who are hidden in plain sight. And as a former lower grades teacher, this makes my heart so happy because we had so many kids who didn't quite meet the national norms and had to work really hard through the parent referral system and a much more complicated process to be identified as a Level IV kid in our system. And yet, the regular curriculum that I was able to offer them, even when differentiated, was not cutting it. And so it gives me a lot of joy to be able to second Ms. Pakarski's motion, and I hope that all of our colleagues will join us in extending opportunity to even more kids.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen. Are there any other board members who'd like to speak to this motion? Ms. Seismarheiser?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the addition in the motion of using national norms. I don't want this-- I think this is a great idea to open up the screening pool, but I want to make sure that what we're doing doesn't unintentionally hurt students as well. So I'm glad that we have the flexibility of using local norms and national norms and letting students qualify either way. I did have a question for our staff, Dr. Presidio, I think, or Dr. Brabran. What are you using to make up local norms? I'm assuming it's norming the test, or is there other pieces that's going to make up local norms?
I'm going to let Dr. Presidio speak to that, and he can speak to it with a little bit more clarity than I can.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Brabran, and thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser, for that question. So essentially, the local norm process takes the division norms and looks at what the norms would be at a particular school. So it's basically using the definition of gifted education of looking at students' performance based on students of the same age and experience in the local context. So we're looking at using the test scores, in this case, on their universal screening assessment on the NMAT, the Naglieri Assessment, at the local level, not just at the national or division level.
I'd say if I understand you're using the Naglieri test that you're still using, it's just normed at the local level instead of normed at a national level.
That's correct.
But if there's schools where norming at a national level would result in students being entered in the screening pool, whereas norming at the local level would not result in that, you could still use the national norms, correct?
Yeah, that's what this motion is saying, is that we would use either the local norms or the national norm to identify students. So again, I want to thank the board members, Ms. Pakarski, who worked so hard on this, Ms. McLaughlin, who worked so hard on this as well, to make sure that we weren't disadvantaging any students through the use of local norms.
Yeah, that's my concern. I love the idea of being more inclusive in our screening pool, using local norms, but I obviously don't want to hurt anybody who would have qualified using national norms as well. So as long as it's more inclusive and not less, that's how I first understood it, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Donat Kofax.
Yes, thank you. I do want to first say to Ms. Pakarski and Ms. Lorgin Cohen, I appreciate both of them listening to my concerns earlier today and making some modifications so we could incorporate both national and local norms, depending on each of our 150 elementary schools, what happens with those normings. And I just want to ask on slide five, if staff can bring up the presentation on slide five, Dr. Presidio, part of what I want to make sure the public understands, if they were looking at this, without the modification in the motion tonight, school F, under national norms, 18% of the students would have been identified for eligibility in their testing. Local norms only in that particular school would have created a 6% drop, down to only 12% being identified. So that's the benefit of this modification to the motion. And I think this really achieves that equity for all that I believe this board, the superintendent, the community recognizes is important. But following along with Ms. Seismarheiser asked, when we look at the column, schools A through C, where we really see a tremendous benefit by using our local norms per the recommendations of our external research experts, what actually creates that leap from, like, say, take school A, from 3% to 12%? To Ms. Seismarheiser's point, when you're creating the local norms, how does it differ from the national norms of creating that sort of broader capturing of students? Like, you take that test, I understand it, but how are you at one point saying, like, are you looking at just a certain percentage of students within that school, and that's going to be that local norming? And what percentage-- are you looking for a certain percentage of the students or just who scores within a certain range within those local norms? I just, I would like for the public and maybe those of us who don't understand how that generates the growth.
Right. I mean, essentially, what we're doing is looking at the statistical distribution of the scores within that particular school. So we start with, you know, the national sample, then we look at our division sample, and then we look at the sample within the school. So you're really looking at, you know, the distribution within a particular local context for local norms within that school, so however many standard deviations you are away from the mean in that particular school. And the reason that that's important is we're looking for those kids in that particular school that need to have some additional challenge, some additional acceleration based on their ability to work and learn at a rate and pace where they might not be challenged in the general education curriculum in that particular local context.
So for, like, slide six on the chart where it says combined local and national norms, the first chart where it was just national norms, standard deviation reads 8.4. And then, that was on slide five. Slide six then goes to the combined local and national norms, standard deviation is now 14.98. So is--
And again, that's for the overall second-grade pool. That's not for the standard deviation within a particular local school.
Right. But by doing this way, that's where the change will be?
That's where the change-- that's correct.
Okay. And the other thing I just want to point out for the public is on slide six, where it was showing what those changes might be from slide five, because of this motion being adjusted, I think it will be important for the division to adjust that chart so we don't create concern in the community where there isn't needing to be. In terms of-- like, we're looking at making positive improvement for students. There's no-- by doing this change, we don't have a harmful shift in any particular school or demographic, correct?
Absolutely. That's absolutely correct, and we are happy to update the numbers. We didn't have a chance to do that and post it yet this afternoon, but we're happy to do that. That is very important. And again, thank you very much for your work and your work with Ms. Pakarski this afternoon to make that change, so we appreciate it.
And Dr. Presidio, as always, I appreciate how much you make yourself incredibly available to this board on a constant basis. It's deeply appreciated. And Dr. Brabran, I want to make sure you hear it since you're his boss. Finally, to my colleagues, you know me, I dig down in the data to a fault sometimes. This is a pilot. And so for the public, where there's any concerns about when you're doing a pilot, and it'd be nice to get even more data than we might have in front of us, but what I like about this is that it's a one-year pilot, and we're trying to do good, and so I'm willing to take a leap of faith. The only question I might have, Dr. Brabran, is that are you willing to bring to our board, after you go through this first selection cycle, bring us the results, allow the board to look at it and say, okay, this is what it yielded by this action? And then I know-- and then maybe lead-- maybe present as part B what your plan will be on how we'll measure the pilot? Because right now, we're-- the pilot's a concept, but we don't know--
Sure. Absolutely. We need to continue, and you've been a great advocate about data-driven decision-making. We're going to bring that. And really, we want to-- again, Dr. Plucker recommended it. That was step one. Step two, really, is this pilot, and then step three is taking the data from the pilot and coming back with a more long-term plan. And it is time to develop a long-term strategic plan for our advanced academics programming. And I know Dr. Presidio now, in his role as chief academic officer, is going to make this one of his key priorities. So I'm very excited about it, and I really am excited that Ms. Pakarski and you, working together. I think this is going to be a great step forward. It's inclusive, it's an equity lens on our work, and it's going to give more kids an opportunity to shine and do the talent development, the talent development that we want to do in this system. So thank you for your advocacy, and I look forward to the rest of the board conversation and hopefully a positive review tonight.
Absolutely. I just, I want this pilot to be successful, and that's why I think if you bring your plan back to the board, we can hopefully make sure we've got our bases covered for how we're going to measure it and allow the public to know that we're trying to be very intentional. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donat Kofax?
Thank you. I wanted to say that I appreciate the makers of the motion as I had stopped talking and the modifications made to the motion tonight and today. As I talked to so many of you, I did feel that there was a certain-- while there was a need to strengthen equity of access to the programs, cast the net wider, do more talent development, that has been something I had been talking about for a long time with respect to the AAP program. I was concerned, and I wasn't able to articulate it the way my colleagues did earlier today to ensure that there, while we're casting the net wider one way, it wasn't shrinking the other way. So I appreciate the change to the amendment. I am in support of it in that way. I do have one question for Dr. Presidio. On chart six, on page six of the charts, when you talk about the combined local and national norms, and you have a minimum of 79, can you explain that, obviously, maximum is 160, that's what you could get on the Naglieri, or I think the CAGAD is scored the same way? But 79, based upon what the Naglieri says, I just like to know why you chose that number and how that was arrived at, because it's kind of low on the score for the Naglieri.
Yeah, again, it's not a number that's chosen, it's a number derived, again, from the statistical-- the statistical distribution of the entire sample. So here, we're looking at the entire sample of all the test takers at grade two.
Okay, but it would still be a, the net would be, you could have a minimum of 79, is that right, on the score?
Yes.
Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's correct.
Okay. So, again, when you look at the Naglieri, and they have descriptions of what percentile rank and they are, that, am I incorrect in saying that that's described by the makers of the test as below average?
Well, it's a nationally-normed test, so yes, I mean, it's below the mean.
Okay.
I do, I just want to...
I guess, I'm trying to just understand how that was the number...
Again, it's just a statistical description of the distribution of the scores. So it's not a number that we chose. That just happens to be the minimum number of a score of a student at a particular school who potentially would be identified. But I think the really important thing for everybody...
Okay, that helps. Right there, that description helps.
Okay.
And keep going, you were going to say something else. I didn't want to cut you off.
Well, no, no, that's okay. It's just, I think sometimes when we look at the scores, you know, and the score is an important indicator, but it's just to get you to the table to be considered for identification.
To the table.
So, once the students come to the table, which is basically our screening process, then what we're looking at is a holistic review of student test scores, student work samples, any teacher scoring that's done on the gifted behavior rating scale, and parent letters that might be included in a file, and other work samples.
Well, I thank you, and thank you, Dr. Presidio. Again, as so many have said, we are appreciative of you and being available to us to talk this through. And with the changes made today, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Omeish, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Thank you first to Ms. Bukarski and Ms. McLaughlin for bringing this forward, and really effectively saving what was a great effort we had been working on since the work session. You know, I'd really be remiss not to be very clear about where we are on this matter. I want to ask Dr. Presidio a question regarding, you know, the idea, if we were to have expanded this, absolutely, right? So, without necessarily limiting it or confining it in a particular way, would any child who would have been normally included have been excluded from the local Level Four, or AAP services?
I think it's important to remember that there's two ways that a student can come to the table to begin the eligibility process. One is through the universal screener, the ENAT test in this case, or through a parent referral. 70% of our students come to the table directly through parent referral. So I'm not sure that students who would not have been identified with the local norms in a particular school where that local norm was higher than the division norm, there would be some students like that. That's what we represent in the attachment, the School F example. But those students could still be self-referred. So it's just hard to say whether or not those students and families would choose to self-refer or not. But what this motion, as amended, does is it prevents that possibility from happening.
Right. No, thank you. And really, all it would change on the ground is to expand the number of students who can access the service, right?
Well, that's correct. That's what the local norms does in most of our schools. It expands the opportunity for us to identify students, to have them come to the table.
I just want to be very clear. I mean, I think, you know, on the equity issues, we tend to think that this is zero sum, when really, we're, you know, we're raising the bar for all students, right? We're allowing access for more, like, you know, the old expression of a high tide raises all boats, right? So just want to be clear on that. Dr. Presidio, would you also please outline the background, research, study, the board actions that have taken place throughout the past year, and even beginning with the previous board, that have, you know, substantially backed up the recommendations we visited in the work session that led to this?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Ms. Bukarski did a great job of that in speaking to the motion originally, that this is a recommendation that came from an external study that was completed over the course, really, of a year, where we brought together five external researchers from some of the most prestigious universities, research institutions in the country, that specialize in gifted education. And they engaged in extensive study, data analysis, and stakeholder interviews in FCPS over a lengthy period of time, and which culminated in a number of recommendations for us in terms of strategic actions that we could take to increase equity of access and opportunity. And the number-one strategy that they identified actually was the use of local norms. Because, as the researchers pointed out, really what you're trying to do is identify those students in their local context, as close as possible to their school, to their classroom, that we believe and we know that if we could get them to the screening table, many of them will be successful in greater academic challenge. So this was one of the highest recommendations that we had from that external research team, and we're excited to be able to bring that to you for a vote again today.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. My final question for you is, what additional steps that may have come out of this research, from your understanding on the ground, could be done? Perhaps, you know, discussed at the work session, or you're welcome to elaborate further, that is not being done to expand equity and access for all families right now?
Well, I think, you know, as Dr. Brabran mentioned, we definitely want to study the impact of the identification process that we're proposing here, and that if it is successful, we would come back to the board, share that information with you, and seek to expand it to other schools, well, I should say, to all schools, all of our elementary schools, in the coming years.
Thank you.
So that would be the number one thing. Yes.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I mean, I think, again, and just really being honest about the situation here, you know, we visited this in a work session, and we had the opportunity to take a look at the many reforms Dr. Presidio has mentioned, that have been backed by the research the previous board had commissioned, and are now, you know, and had the opportunity to consider how staff was going to implement that, based on years, literature reviews, and robust research that led us here. And this is a step. Again, I appreciate Ms. Bukarski saving the situation by allowing us to pilot it, but I look forward to seeing the many ways we can expand AAP for all students. I don't want to be in a position where, and I don't believe it's right to be in a position, where as a division, we are telling a family, we are telling a child, you want to take this advanced course, but eh, maybe not, you know, I get it that you see yourself having this potential, but we're not sure you belong there. This is an opportunity for us, Dr. Presidio has outlined many things, that I look forward to seeing the support of my colleagues on, because at the end of the day, again, this is expanding access, this is really, truly embodying one Fairfax and saying, every child has potential, and every child can succeed in our system by name and by need, not just, you know, ones who are going to make it through some kind of filter. And I know there are many parents out there who are frustrated because they want their kids accessing this advanced program, that our taxpayer dollars pay for anyway. I was lucky enough to be a product of it myself, and I think any student can succeed in it, given the right resources and supports, which is our job to provide. So with that, obviously, I'll be supporting this, and I do look forward to us further supporting the localizing piece after it's successful, which I have no doubt it will be, as we know from the research already, universalizing it further, and expanding AAP for all students, and supporting the additional pieces Dr. Presidio spoke to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and I'm pleased to be able to follow my colleague, Ms. Omeish. How appropriate is it that we are looking at this motion on the same day that we talk and we honor inclusive schools? Because what this is about is casting a wide net for access to opportunities for students. It recognizes that looking at each child by name and need means that you also have to look at the environment from whence they come. It is something that builds on work that this board and the previous board has done in the advanced academic area. It is an incremental piece of that work. I want to draw my colleagues' attention to both Mr. Professor Plucker and Professor Scott Peters, who are both part of the consulting team that did the initial study on AAP and access to AAP for this board. Both of those gentlemen have done extensive analysis on how the utilization of local norms does not take away opportunities, but rather grows opportunities, and grows opportunities and access to areas of our community that may not have seen it in the past. There's been extensive work on the positive impact of local norms that they have on creative, inclusive, advanced academic opportunities. It is my understanding that Dr. Peters will be releasing a new handbook on how to actually implement local norms, and I look forward to that handbook being shared with this board. But I also want to draw attention to this board's role in creating the positive policy environment for improving access to opportunities for all. There are 17 states in this country that currently require the use of local norms. The state of Virginia does not require the use of local norms, but the state of Virginia watches what the Fairfax County School Board does in increasing opportunity and access for students. And so, with that, I just want to know, want you to know, I appreciate all of the hard work of Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darinat Kofax, over the years on advanced academics, and just let you know that I will be supporting this effort. So, thank you, and I look forward to the results of this pilot.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other speakers, I will take a brief turn to speak on this matter. I'm very glad as well to follow Ms. Omeish and Ms. Corbett Sanders. I will be supporting this motion, and apparently, I was thinking along the same lines as Ms. Corbett Sanders, because I think particularly in light of what we just recognized earlier with Inclusive Schools Week, that this is apropos. I do believe that this approach will increase opportunity for our students, but I want to really caution us into thinking that the work is done with this pilot, or even if this pilot is expanded into other spaces. There's a body of research, and we heard about it this evening too, that speaks to universal access to advanced curriculum. This is a great opportunity to cast a wide net, but we can still cast an even wider net to capture all of our students. I am not going to belabor the point, because I think Ms. Omeish made much of the, shared much of the content that I wanted to articulate. But we need to be able to challenge ourselves to move beyond sorting our students to provide them with opportunity. We can provide all of our students with opportunity. It is okay. Gifted instruction or advanced curriculum, it's good teaching, and it is good for all of our students, and they will rise to that occasion. I've seen this firsthand, as someone who's been in education for 23 years. And so I look forward to the day where we can be that bold, and engage all of our students, and not feel the need to sort and separate them in order to grow them. We can meet them where they are. We can differentiate for them, so that they all excel, so that they all have that access. So, having said that, I don't see any other speakers. I will call for the vote, except my computer died, and my screen just closed. So, please give me a moment while I find the script to read the motion. And of course, it is not working. Ms. Bukarski, can you please read the motion that you would like for us to vote upon, please?
Yep, pulling it up right now. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm there, sorry. I got it.
Oh, did you want that?
Yep. Okay. The motion before us is, I move that in school year 2021, for schools with AAP Local Level Four or AAP Local Level Four Center, the pool of second-grade students to be screened for AAP Level Four services will be identified by piloting the use of local building norms, while ensuring that any student who meets the national norm is also identified for screening. And schools that do not yet have a Local Four program, national norms will continue to be used to identify students for eligibility screening. All of those in favor? We have Ms. Omeish, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Darinat Kofax, and myself. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Bukarski and Ms. Cohen, for your work on this. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Bukarski to go through our consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I am just pulling it up. I'm sorry. Too many. Okay. Okay. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to a meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We will move on to 6.01 new business. The new business items are on the screen. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled for a future meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I call on Dr. Brabran for Superintendent Matters.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. First of all, I just want to say, Nathan, I heard you. Our leadership team heard you. Our principals heard you. Our staff heard you. And Kimberly, I sat with you here last year, I heard you. And we want your voice and your input as we continue through this year, and we will use your recommendations to make the changes necessary, to make sure students are heard, respected, listened to, valued. So I look forward to Nathan getting your letter, and I have reached out to Kimberly. And Kimberly, I look forward to getting your recommendations and bringing those before the board, and acting on real recommendations that are going to affect kids right now. I want to also share with you all that this is Virginia Department of Education's Ed Equity Week in Virginia, with a focus on equity for all kids. And I did applaud just a moment ago, I am thrilled, as Ms. Corbett Sanders so eloquently said, what Fairfax County does is what a lot of the rest of the Virginia school districts watch. Of course, other districts across the country watch. And doing the pilot for local norms tonight is going to send a powerful message about equity across this Commonwealth, and work to eliminate the predictability of student outcomes based on factors such as race, zip code, family income, ability, or home language. So I'm excited to see not just words, but action, and what a perfect time to do it, as we're observing Ed Equity Week. I want you to know too that we've established, as I talked about listening to Nathan and Kimberly, a new leadership program around keeping equity at the center of our work and amplifying student voice. We have SEALs. I know you've heard of Navy SEALs, but now we have SEALs in Fairfax County that are our Student Equity Ambassador Leaders. They have been selected from each of our schools to help us provide an increased understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion through leadership development, projects, and relevant experiences. These high school kids I've already had the opportunity to meet with. Our staff is meeting with them regularly. And this is about students getting to create a more active role for themselves and for school leadership to hear them on how we're going to have a more equitable and culturally responsive learning environment in our schools. I want to thank all of our staff that are working with the SEALs, and I want to thank the board for your continued commitment and partnership to equity in Fairfax County Public Schools. I also just want to mention, we've got great kids. We know that. And we have a great community, and it's wonderful to see our kids and staff and community members come together to support our community. Hernan High School, their NJROTC students donated 11 family meals for Thanksgiving and pledged another 10 meals for the winter break in honor of the class of 2021, and they'll be provided to families via the Food for Neighbors program. The cadets normally visit neighborhoods to ask for food donations, but this time they found new ways to contribute, and so glad that they've done it. We also have families in the Mount Vernon community. They've teamed up with Unity Food Bank along with Fairfax County Supervisor Rodney Lusk, and students from Langley High School, so really a cross-section of our county, to provide over 300 baskets of food, including turkeys donated by NBC Washington, and pies donated by Century 21 to families in our FCPS community. What a wonderful collaboration, and just so proud to see all of our kids coming together with members of our community to do this. And then I also want to note, South Lakes High School junior Christina and her brother Christopher, who is a recent graduate of South Lakes, along with their mother, have sewn and donated 1,000 masks to the South Lakes Food Pantry for distribution. Talk about the FCPS portrait of a graduate being an ethical and global citizen. We really shout out Christina and her brother from South Lakes for this amazing work. And then finally, as a final note of giving, as we celebrate Thanksgiving holiday and think about the winter break coming up before us, the FCPS Foundation continues to collect funds in support of students. They're currently collecting funds for Project Cornucopia, which makes sure our students in greatest need can enjoy a holiday meal with their family. Any funds donated to the foundation will be used for gift cards that can be redeemed for groceries, and contributions can be made through December 31st. Please go to the FCPS Foundation website. You can find that link through our FCPS website at www.fcpss.edu. As superintendent, I am proud of the work that this community is doing as we rally people together to support one another during this pandemic. Thank you very much, Chairman Anderson.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bray Brand. At this time, I will call on Mr. Frisch for a report on the Governance Committee, and then Ms. Seismohizer for a report from the Public Engagement Committee. And then we will end with Ms. Bukarski with an update from the forum held earlier this week. Please feel free to follow each other without me reintroducing the three of you.
Thank you. Governance Committee met on November 18th and made progress on updates to our long-awaited Conflicts of Interest Policy. We hope to vote on our final draft at our meeting this month and send it to the full board for consideration. Also, we approved a timeline for developing the board's anti-racism, anti-bias policy, and controversial issues policy amendments, including independent gathering of stakeholder and community input. Lastly, a new No Change Memo has been received by the committee, and we have already started our review of nearly two dozen policies, and we'll dive deeper at our meeting later this month. Thank you.
Thank you. The Public Engagement Committee also met this week, and we've actually been working on the public comment policy and updating our public comment policy, which is actually great timing, because I know we've heard from some members of our public that they have not been as able to access speaking at our board meetings as they would like. So we've been working for the past, I think, three months or so, updating our public comment policy with really the eye of being more inclusive and giving more opportunities for more community members to be able to address the board and have their voices be heard. So we finalized that policy this week, the draft of the policy. So I want to just thank my colleagues on the Public Engagement Committee, Mr. Carl Frisch, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Omeish, for really their hard work and really excellent ideas on how to be more inclusive and open with our public comment policies. And I look forward to bringing the policy to the full board for comment and hopefully approval soon. So I think we've done great work. We're going to turn our focus really to focus on our advisory committees to make sure that they are as effective as we would like them to be and update our policies and procedures. So that will be the next step for our Public Engagement Committee. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The board heard one forum topic this week presented by Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara. She requested that the board approve directing the superintendent to create a scoping plan to establish an academy at John Lewis High School that adopts the principles of his life's work. Ms. Keys-Gamara passionately presented this idea for an academy with curriculum focused on government, public policy, leadership, human rights, and opportunities for internships around the Washington DC area. During board discussion, there was excitement for a program of this nature and the opportunities it would bring to Lewis students and others in the surrounding region. The concerns raised were prioritization of a program such as this during a time of increased workload on staff due to COVID and potential budgetary implications with the anticipated difficult year ahead. The forum topic failed to gather the majority support of the board, at which point Ms. Keys-Gamara asked the board to reconsider the forum topic request by postponing the scoping to begin in the summer of 2021 with no upcoming budgetary implications. The board threw a majority vote of 9-3, approved this exploratory work to begin next summer. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are up to Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Cohen.
Can never decide if marrying someone with the last name C was a blessing or a curse. On the 18th, Abra Omeish and I were pleased to be a part of the joint CIP meeting, the first one with the Board of Supervisors. We were pleased to be joined by Supervisor Faust and Supervisor Smith as well. And we'll be meeting every six weeks, and I can't speak for Ms. Omeish, but I think we both felt really encouraged and excited about the idea of working together with the county on really addressing some of the capacity issues and the extremely long renovation queue that we have here in FCPS. And I think everybody was really motivated towards solutions and real answers, and we'll have more hopefully to update soon. We are pleased to be able to be a part of that. I've really appreciated my time these last couple of weeks speaking to students and families and teachers and our PTA leaders. Thanks to FCCPTA for having me last night. Sorry for all the technical issues, but I appreciate your patience and bearing with me. And I look forward to participating in the White Oaks PTA meeting on the 15th. And just to follow up on what Nathan shared, and I so appreciate everything that Nathan brings to this board. I feel so encouraged every time I get to hear him speak that if we're churning out students like that in FCPS, I feel just awfully proud of who these kids are turning out to be. But I do want to say, just to echo what Nathan said, we hear you, you know, and we are working really hard to try to get better answers for now and in the future. So I know sometimes it rings hollow, but please hang in there and just know that we're trying and trying to make things better right now. So happy belated Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing you virtually in the next couple of weeks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Darrenat Kofax.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. And I too want to echo the comments with my colleague, Ms. Cohen, about how important it is for us to hear not only Nathan's voice, but Kimberly's voice. We do hear you, and we understand how important it is for every student to feel that they are being heard, that their needs are recognized. We respect what you're calling out for, and we will do everything in our power to meet your needs. We know that this is a very difficult time. This board is focused on ensuring that we act on what we are hearing from you. And we are hearing not only from you, but we're hearing from parents. We are hearing it from PTAs. We are hearing it from people, our neighbors, our nieces, our nephews, our children, about how important it is for us to recognize the impact that this epidemic is having on our children, and we need to act, and we will act. I also want to thank the Stratford-on-the-Potomac, the South Fairfax Chamber of Commerce, and the American Association of University Women, who over the past two and a half, three weeks have created opportunities for me to hear even more from our community, as well as the Mount Vernon High School and West Potomac High School Pyramid PTAs. It is with that information and the comments that each of you have made that I will be working with my colleagues and with the superintendent to make sure that we address your cries for help and support. And finally, just on a public notice point, I want to make sure that people know that there is free COVID testing on the Richmond Highway Corridor at the Mount Vernon Adult Day Healthcare Center Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Fridays. And so given where we are with the numbers in our community right now, anybody who needs to get a test should follow up with the Mount Vernon Adult Day Health Mount Vernon Adult Day Healthcare Center. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenat Kofax, followed by Ms. Marin, and then Ms. Omeish.
Thank you. And I, this is more of a post-Thanksgiving update. I do want to say thank you to our entire Northern Virginians allegation for turning out for our legislative briefing, our virtual briefing that we had. We had 100% attendance, and we really appreciate you taking the time to listen to us, and we look forward to working with you as we go, as you begin to begin your session in January after the holidays. I also want to thank Hayfield Secondary PTSDA for your partnership with the community and all of the funds and meals that you served and you were able to provide, I should say, to give those gifts to those members of the community in need. You made such an impact. So I am grateful for you doing that. There are so many organizations out there that have helped. Scott referenced some here in my community as well. So thank you all for looking out for your neighbors now during this holiday time, but also during this time where there's a pandemic and people are not able to, are not working, are unable to get out the way they would. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you to Alice's Kids. You have been great partners for us. And each and every week, there are amazing stories about that group on the Mount Vernon side of the district. So thank you for all that you do for us as well. And Grand Involved, who continue to support our most vulnerable learners virtually, a group that started out, Grand Involved was a grandparent group. I think it's mixed age group now, but those who are reaching out to their members in the community in a virtual way and continuing to help. So I thank you for all of that, and I do look forward to our Return to Learn update, which we will be having next week. And I do want to say I will continue to monitor that, make certain that we, as we proceed, we do it safely and with the health of our teachers, our staff, and our students in mind. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Let me get set up here. Yeah, so I'd like to share two things tonight. One is to share some reflections about the work that I've been involved with to this point, almost a full year, and then to share some specific work updates. So I must say, the comments of our three student reps tonight, or our two student representatives and a public speaker about the status of students during COVID resonated profoundly with me. I usually don't read remarks, but I had to write down my thoughts, because there's a lot that I just wanted to share. So I want to say that I center students every day, and this happens most prominently with me when I sit with my own children every school day, who are in second and fifth grade as they learn virtually. And like many parents, I've had to find patience and fortitude that I didn't know that I had to put the needs of students ahead of my own. And I observe how their classmates are faring and eager to see how they engaged and really heartbroken when I see that they don't. But of course, it's not just through my personal experience that I center students. Students are everywhere for me in my mind. When I go for a walk and I don't see school buses, when I walk by empty schools or on the athletic fields, I'm always thinking about what could have been happening or what should be or what will be. You know, in the emails I get from families and students begging to return to school, and those I get begging to remain virtual. I try to figure out ways I can help specifically. Most often, I let them know that I hear them. I'm sharing their comments with my colleagues and the superintendent. I've tried to be action-oriented during this pandemic, choosing carefully where I spend my time and the work when so much simultaneously needs to be a priority. Multitasking has taken on a new definition for me. Doing things, at least two of them simultaneously, is a new norm for me. I've tried to analyze where I and the board can maneuver within the constraints of the very limited powers that a local school board has in Virginia and the realities of COVID that thwarts our actions. When our student rep, Mr. Anabudo, advocated for homework changes a month ago through an eloquent letter to the superintendent and school board, I immediately asked our superintendent, what could we do? I asked about the homework policy that hasn't been updated on record since 2004. And the backstory also is that in June, on the Governance Committee, you know, I supported the next step needed to get that policy into a work session. And yet this hasn't happened. But back to the future, in response to Mr. Anabudo's letter, while the superintendent fairly soon did communicate to staff about initiating a catch-up day where no new work would be assigned one day a quarter, and reminding staff, as they had been directed in the start of the year, to grade, you know, differently and keep homework at a minimum. When I asked Mr. Anabudo tonight if anything had changed since then, he said, no. Nothing noticeably had changed in his workload. And then we all heard his public comments. Since July, I've been asking the school board as a body and the superintendent and leadership team to clear the decks of anything except return-to-school admission-critical work, like the budget and other legal requirements that we need to maintain the operations of the school division. Yet, as students have communicated tonight, and they are doing with many students and families in the community, other topics have come before this board for attention. In some instances, opportunities present themselves or really thrust themselves on us, like work to defeat racism and grow equity. I've supported this work during COVID because for some of the topics in particular, the public rose to a clarion call never heard before in this community. And it's tough when advocates say that "we" that I am not doing enough, because I'm simultaneously working to address needs regarding return to school and racism. They aren't mutually exclusive to me. Ensuring kids are supported during virtual learning means helping all kids and especially those who are traditionally underserved, marginalized, and victims of racism. racism. So, it's hard to keep finding time that doesn't exist, to carve out more and more time when we are trying to help students survive. And there is this tension of being creative and aspirational against trying to tread water where we're at. And all there should be some bit of creativity in that treading of water. It's really hard to envision new work right now. So, I ask the community to consider all the boiling pots on the stove that I know I'm trying to attend. Hearing older students tonight and young adults articulate their experiences, and their disappointments, and their pleas to this board, which I'm just one of 12, really hits me in a way than what my own children aren't developmentally ready to communicate. Ms. Boateng, as she often does, said it pretty much right on. Things are not normal now and we are acting towards students as we are. I want to say to you, Ms. Boateng, and your peers, that unfortunately, we're all, we're all subject to this kind of behavior right now. And we need to do what we can better to be more focused. Mr. Onabudo so eloquently gave this board his remarks, to be creative and to elevate work to the common good. And I believe that we can do that. I want to say, just in closing, I think this is the longest board matter I've ever had, this board is tasked with doing important work for the success of children. Everything feels like a priority, but if that's really the case, then nothing is. We can't strategically undertake the work in a way to really help kids. It's true that not everything right now, in this moment, is a priority for this board. So, I believe at this time that I would like for the school division to prioritize those items that pertain to the entirety of our student body and the school division. Those must be our priorities at this time. I'd also just really quickly like to share some work that I've been involved in. Just today, myself and Ms. Seismarheiser met with FCPS mental health staff to learn more about what is being done systemically. And there is a lot of great stuff happening. I just wasn't aware. And so, I look forward to hearing more about that to the full board. I'm hosting a set of PTA executive board meetings with different pyramids, so elementary schools from Madison and South Lakes, and then high school meetings where we're also trying to get some of the boosters to be represented there. So, if you're affiliated with the high school boosters that have, please reach out or we'll find you. Indeed, as another colleague said, we've had a lot of, well, I've had the last full two weeks regarding advocacy and partnership with the delegates and senators that represent us in the General Assembly. So, I hosted a Take Your Legislator to School visit in honor of the Virginia School Board Association's monthly observance, where we went to Colvin Run Elementary. So, thank you, Mr. Youngie, Mr. Stotterson, Ms. Scarborough, and Ms. Johns for having us in your school and kindergarten classroom. It greatly helped the elected officials to see what we're grappling with. And it was so important for them to see that. Then we did have the legislative briefing with dozens of electeds. And then just this week, it might have actually just been yesterday, I testified in front of the state FOIA council about more, of supporting a subcommittee's recommendation for more meeting flexibility for individuals to meet virtually in local times, and this whole, in normal times. And this whole board signed a letter for a total of 61 elected officials in Virginia representing 20 jurisdictions, asking for that, and it went through. But, so now it just goes to a bill. So, we keep advocating, but it's a good step for trying to make us be very available to our constituents and participate fully. So, thank you for indulging me on extra time tonight, and I'll be shorter in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Omeish.
Despite having many things to share, I want to be mindful, we're going to be going, I'm going to be bringing a motion going to close later. I just want to make sure I announce for the public's sake, three motions that I'm likely bringing to the board next meeting, two on TJ, one to localize our evaluation of students, the second to universalize our consideration of students. And finally, as was reflected in the work session, a motion to ban seclusion, and to replace the rooms with sensory rooms. But I'll, but I'll stop there because I know I promised my colleagues we're going into closed and I don't want to take up too much time.
Mr. Fresh, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. I'll keep this short. I feel like we're going to race to the end of the year with fewer and fewer days left to fill. To that end, I'm trying to squeeze in as much time with constituents as possible, continuing to hold office hours. And over the next two weeks, I'll be meeting with some community associations, including Providence District Council, and about a half dozen PTAs at elementary schools. So, trying to jam it all in before the 2020 on the calendar turns into 2021. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, go ahead, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I will ask for your indulgence. And Ms. Omeish, I am so sorry that you want to make a motion, and I will not be able to follow that based on our current workload. I do want to thank everyone. This board has been working very hard, and so has our staff members and our families. And I want to first of all, recognize that and thank our, our staff for trying to address many, many things. Some of the things that I have been involved in, I had the pleasure of participating with Mr. Fritz at the public hearing at Mosby Woods, participated in a meeting regarding principal selection for Glasgow, and have been able to meet with a number of our principals to try to understand what we are facing. As you heard, one of the big events for me this week was my John Lewis forum topic. And I will say that I have worked very hard to represent those people who have really reached out to me because this was so important to them, to help to build our community and with the hope that it would impact the entire county. We had support reaching out to local universities. We had petition signatures from students, nearly 200. We had petition signatures from adults. And so, I understand that our board is working to try to figure things out. I would like to continue the discussion about how we do that, because we are a large system of many parts. And I think that it is a mistake to think that we cannot focus on those parts, make sure that the whole is strengthening. So, we will continue to work. I want to say to the young people who have expressed disappointment that we are not giving up, that members in the community have been energized, and we will continue that work. And just in closing, the day that this motion was made for John Lewis, the John Lewis Academy to be established for Public Policy, Human Rights, Leadership and Government, was also the day that Rosa Parks refused to give up her bus seat, and the day that Abraham Lincoln said, reaffirmed his commitment to abolishing slavery. And I gather inspiration from that, because we will continue to fight for the parts that make us the whole, because that is how we grow stronger. So, I will continue this discussion with my colleagues and with our community, and I thank you all.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you. Before I give my remarks, I just want to confirm, Dr. Anderson, we are not going back into closed this evening. That's correct. We're taking up whatever issues we have tomorrow in our closed.
I think some board members are interested in putting that forward to the board for consideration to return. So, we'll have the board act on that motion.
So, I'm just, once again, I'm just disappointed. I mean, the board was told in closed, we would take it up tomorrow. Something's changed. I don't know why we weren't notified as a board of a whole, that someone wanted to do that, because it comes as a surprise at 10:41 that now something's changing. I would really ask in the future, whoever's going to give the motion that we want to go back into closed tonight, you really should copy all of your colleagues. We shouldn't be surprised by one board member making note of it, and, you know, in me asking for clarity. I'm now finding it out only because one board member mentioned it. I just don't think that's good practice. But anyway, I do want to, first of all, say to Dr. Brabran, the concerns we've continued to hear from Mr. Onabudo and our former student rep, Kimberly Boateng. As you know, this division under Karen Garza took really good steps to address teacher workload and student workload. By the division telling our teachers we are not requiring two graded assessments a week, we dropped it from eight, from two a week down to one a week, which meant nine assessments per quarter instead of 18. Now, we've been in COVID. We keep talking to those students' remarks that we're very mindful of teacher workload and student workload. So, I would just formally ask for your consideration that when we really talk about that, we hear them, we care, we understand it for our teachers and employees, we need to really think about, again, bringing down the number of graded assessments and homework loads. We want this obviously to be meaningful measures to check and see how students are doing, but it's the grading component that I think is putting so much mental health stress and physical brain stress for teachers and students. So, I'm not necessarily putting you on the spot right now, tonight, but I just, I want to say that I really think this isn't as complicated as it needs to be. It's whether you and your leadership team talk and say, what can we do with direction we give to our teachers? Because I think that right now, the direction to them is one graded assignment per week. And until we change that, the students aren't going to see a change in their workload stream.
We'll have more to share at Thursday's Return to School Work Session. I absolutely agree. Thank you. And we've heard the students loud and clear tonight. We've been working on it, and we'll have more to share at Thursday's Return to School Work Session.
That's great, and I appreciate that, Dr. Brabran. I also want to tell you, Dr. Brabran, I've so appreciated the teachers in our school division who've invited so many of us to come visit their virtual classrooms, as well as when we were able to go visit their concurrent classrooms. That has really allowed us as board members to get to see firsthand what instruction's looking like right now. And you and I have had the pleasure of working together the last three years. You know I'm always pushing on you for data. So, I do hope that this division will continue to really focus, as Ms. Maron and others have said, return to school has got to be our paramount focus. And a piece of that is I hope that the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement will really narrow its focus to all of the incredible amount of research and reporting on national and global school divisions that have remained open during COVID, what their positivity rates have been in those jurisdictions. We're hearing from our families that even here in the United States, where the positivity rates are above ours, in our metrics, that they've remained open. I think it would be helpful in those jurisdictions that what's meaningful is what do their COVID cases look like. And so, I do think that, as some colleagues have asked, it of course needs to be apples to apples, but there are plenty of jurisdictions that their public health conditions mirror ours. They're open and we need to be able to help our community understand where success is happening. I truly appreciate that I, you speak eloquently about your desire to get our kids back in school. And I know that's where your heart is, and especially for your own boys, my nephew, Roch and his son, who are all seniors. And I just hope we can really dedicate using the research and the findings and the data to help bring comfort and confidence in our system. And your mitigation teams, I know, are a critical component. So, to the community, please, if this is a paramount focus for you, we will have our Return to School Work Session next Thursday, December 10. And we really hope you'll get to tune in and hear more about where this is. And I just want to say thank you to not just the Braddock District residents, but all of our community that you're writing your emails to us. They matter. We are overwhelmed and we aren't able to respond in the way that we normally, all of us have taken great pride in. Do know your voices matter and your input is appreciated. So, thank you.
Ms. Bukarski, and then Ms. Seismarheiser.
Hey, thank you. I'm actually going to be super quick. Number one, I would like to congratulate Ms. Meredith Norris, who is going to be the new principal at Stone Middle School. That community, I know, was very excited for this announcement, excited to work with her and her staff as a school board member, but also as a parent when one of my own kids will be at Stone next year. And I would also like to thank the Rocky Run Student Services Team, who invited, actually Ms. Keys-Gamara and myself were both there for their Fall Advisory Brainstorming Meeting. And I can say there is real work, hard work, and real dedication shown by our teachers and staff around supporting our students and really being open to listening from, from school board members, to parents, to community members and advocates to, to really get all the ideas they possibly can to support our kids in the best way possible this year. And I am very, very much looking forward to our Return to School update. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I will say I'll be brief, but I never am. So, I'll just put that out there. I also want to say that while I appreciate that we on this board, we all have amazing ideas of how to make our school system better. And we all spent a lot of time and effort in getting to these positions so we could make our school system better, and we could do some amazing things with our school system and, and create some amazing things. And COVID means that we have to keep the main thing the main thing. And that right now is our student and teacher mental health, our student and teacher overwhelm, returning our kids to the school building as safely as we can do it, and supporting our students and our teachers in virtual learning in the meantime. That is the main thing. And that has to be the main thing. We are in a global pandemic. Our teachers are suffering, and our students are suffering. I have been talking since the summer, since May, about our student mental health, about the overwhelm, and about the concerns of a long term, which I will say we're in a long term now, virtual learning environment, and trying to figure out how to return our students to school. So, it's been difficult for me and for many of us, I will say, to put priorities and really great ideas on hold. But that's what we have to do if we're going to be able to do the main thing in the best way we can. And that is, at the end of the day, taking care of our most vulnerable students. If equity is what we believe in, then let's look at who is actually failing through virtual learning. Let's look at who hasn't been mentioned tonight in the conversations here, our special education students. Let's look at the fact that our students from Davis and Polley and Step will be transitioning out this year, and they'll lose their eligibility and going off that cliff without the work space experiences. And I know our principals, I talked to them today at Polley and Davis, are doing amazing things in this virtual environment, and their teachers are doing amazing things. But those are the kids who already have incredibly poor post-secondary outcomes. Let's look at our special education students in secondary school, who are in self-contained special education academic classes, who are trying to maintain on SOL level, but may be reading several grade levels below reading level. And if they do not pass their SOLs this year, or next year, or the year after, they will not get a high school diploma, and it will change the trajectory of their life. That is the main thing. So, I love every idea that people are bringing. I love trying to make our programs more open and equitable, and I believe in it wholeheartedly. But we have got to educate our students, period, end of conversation. We've got to take care of their mental health. So, that is my piece. I'm going to say, so, since I was all, you know, strong armed, I'm going to leave it on a good note. And I want to say two things. First, Nathan, I really appreciate your words. I always do. Kimberly, I appreciate your words. I too am looking forward to how we're going to make change now to the class of 2021, since I have one of those. I just spent like an evening a couple nights ago picking my son's yearbook ads. It is hard. And this division needs to do better in acknowledging how hard it is for our seniors who don't have another year. And I know that you are halfway through your senior And I know that you are halfway through your senior year almost, and I am committed to continuing to fight to make sure we celebrate you and take care of all of our students, those in transition, those struggling, and even those who are doing great in virtual. We want to take care of you. So I'm going to end with something that I wanted to say, because in all of this, I have been most impressed with our students and their attitudes and their resiliency. And so it's a little personal to me, but the Lake Braddock Secondary School choir students, on their own, put together an amazing virtual concert for the residents of Heatherwood Retirement Community as a way to say to the residents, who are, many of them isolating, quarantining, trying to stay safe, that these high school students see you, hear you, and are there with you and are sending you some joy. And I think it's amazing that these students put together not one, but two virtual concerts for these residents. So I want to give a shout out to Lake Braddock Chorus. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and thank you for all those who are still hanging in there listening.
Thank you, Ms. Seismar Heiser. Ms. Tolan.
So Ms. Tolan, maybe the only thing worse than having a name starting with a C is having a name that starts with a T, and I go after Ms. Seismar Heiser every time. I also want to thank Nathan for talking about how our students are doing. Tomorrow, I'm getting on the computer and spending my whole day as a middle school student in just a very small way to see, you know, what that day is really like. Tomorrow, I'm following a hundred middle school student through the day, through the schedule, and I'm aiming at middle school because I've heard some very heartfelt stories about struggles of our students at this level, you know, in addition, of course, to high school, elementary school, et cetera. And then next week, I'm attending Cooper, Cooper Middle School, and Longfellow in January. In addition, I have organizing some meetings with Dransville PTA, PTN, PTO leaders in conjunction with the Safe Community Coalition. And this is on December 14th and 15th, and we'll be hearing particularly about resources for parents to assist children struggling in virtual learning and just dealing with the pandemic in general. So, you know, trying in some small ways to, you know, get at, you know, the struggles that our students are having, and, and our parents too, in working with these, with their children at home. In dealing with our overcrowding issues at McLean High School, I want the community to know that if you, hopefully you know that we have a meeting on Monday evening on our boundary adjustment and scoping at 6:30 on Monday. And we're doing something a little bit different with this boundary adjustment. We have a community advisory council that we put together, made up of neighborhood association leaders, the Great Falls Citizens Association, McLean Citizens Association, McSpaces, and even more importantly, a student rep from each of the high schools involved in the boundary change. And they have been working with myself and staff and work with us through the boundary process to make sure the community has the information that they really need and that they can make the comments that they need and make their voices heard. Looking forward also to our next Return to School Session on the 10th, as I know our parents and students and staff are anxious, very anxious for an update, and I think Ms. McGawker for her comments around that. I'll be meeting with Haycock staff and PTA members soon, and look forward to hearing from them. And lastly, just want to put out a huge congratulations to the McLean High School Highlander journalists and all of the awards that they have won recently, both overall and individually for the incredible journalism that they do in the production of the Highlander magazine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I will be brief in my remarks. I have a number of things that I would like to share. First of all, I want to remind the public that as we discussed the restraint and seclusion policy just a couple of days ago, our board did decide during that meeting to hold a public hearing on that topic. That date will be Friday, December 11th. So you should look forward to having that posted very shortly. I also want to share that there's been a lot of wonderful things happening in Mason. Very similarly to some of my colleagues, I had the opportunity to attend both the middle school advisory for Poe and Glasgow Middle Schools, and I had the chance to hear how they are addressing the issues that are facing our students, particularly in light of the grade reports that was done by Orsi very recently. And as a parent of one of those students, one of those sixth graders who attends that school, I really want to say I am heartened and encouraged by the hard work that the staff of those schools are undertaking to ensure that our students are successful. It is definitely an uphill climb. It, it's hard, but the will is there, plans are there, and I know they will continue to tweak those plans until we have the result that is desired. I also want to say a major shout out to Justice High School. The Virginia Foundation for Community College Education, along with the Northern Virginia Community College, and Fairfax County have partnered to introduce the Urban Initiative Partnership. This is a new career coaching initiative for underserved students that we'll be piloting at Justice High School. This partnership represents an opportunity for students, many of whom have not otherwise would be able to continue their education after high school, or to participate in intensive academic guidance, career coaching, and workforce skills building under the tutelage of a full-time career coach who is, who will be located at the high school. The program seeks to increase the number of students who complete high school, as well as the number of students who choose both college and workforce training after high school. It builds on the existing partnerships with Nova and FCPS, but will really provide personalized guidance and support to students who need that targeted assistance to achieve academic success and post-high school career development goals. I'm very excited that Justice has had this opportunity. So thank you to Mrs. Eck, the principal there, and the entire team, because I know it's your hard work that have managed in making sure that this has happened. And also Dr. Azuluaga, thank you so much for your leadership. And my last comment is just a welcome to the newest principal in Mason, Mr. Kristoff Hill, who has been presented as the principal of West Lawn Elementary School. And the community is so very excited to working with you, and I am looking forward to that as well. So welcome. And I think that concludes our, our comments for this afternoon. And I do understand, Ms. McLaughlin, we do have a board member who wants to make a motion, and as per Robert's rules, that has to be allowed. So Ms. Omeish, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I understand it's an unpopular thing to suggest at 11:00 PM, but I do want to be efficient in our considerations. Obviously, it is closed, so I can't speak too much to it. But I want us to consider that this will allow a more efficient outcome than deferring. So I would like for the board to, Chair Anderson, I'm asking that I move to suggest that we, or rather, I move that we go into closed. Is there a second?
Okay, we have a second. Obviously, Ms. Omeish, would you like to speak very generally to your motion?
Yeah. I, I think we can get somewhere tonight in an efficient amount of time, instead of deferring to tomorrow, where I anticipate we might rehash a lot of the same conversation, and I got to leave it at that because it's closed. Thank you.
Ms. Maron? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
In addition to my disappointment that only certain board members were made aware of this desire, and it's just very harmful to not include the full board on this, not to mention, I don't even know how this gets done during a meeting, I thought our clerk of the board said that the closed meeting room has been broken down for the evening, so where would we be meeting to do this?
And the equipment is no longer in the building.
Like, there's no place to meet. So how are we going into closed if the technology and everything, in order for the 12 of us to do a concurrent meeting, can't?
I don't think we were aware of that. So we do have an issue in terms of being able to participate with the individuals who are at home.
Yeah, I, I happened to see the email come in from our clerk about 10 minutes ago.
Oh.
Yeah, my understanding, we had paused and not decided whether we're moving forward either direction, so.
That is not point of order.
One second, please. Well, I, I believe at this point, we haven't the space. We don't have the technology to set up. It's been broken down. Is that correct? It's been broken down, so we don't have the opportunity to have that be put together. So I, I think essentially our decision has been made for us, because staff will not have an opportunity to do that, and we have no other, no other space to do it.
Well, that's why I, I requested to speak, because I was trying to understand why the motion was continuing.
Thank you.
And, and to Ms. Corbett Sanders, where she's trying to interject, there are some of us who distinctly recall that the chair said we would carry this over tomorrow. And so I'm not sure why people think we voted to pause.
Well, being that we have no space for it, and yes, we did ask for that consideration, but it wasn't finalized, but however, there is no opportunity to have this meeting in the closed session.
Dr. Anderson, I will.
So the meeting is now adjourned, and I'm happy to chat a little bit later on about this. Good night, everyone.